Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, and we're going to kick things off here with a special session. Is there a motion to move into special session?
So moved.
Second? Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Brubaker. All those in favor of going into special session?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now in special session, this is for the approval of an amendment to the Fairgrounds cell tower Chantel lease agreement. Mr. Nice Warner.
Thank you, Mayor. This amendment to this agreement regards the Fairgrounds cell tower that is actually a flagpole cell tower. The improvements that Chantel needs to make require that that pole be replaced, and it's going to be replaced with a pole of the same height but of a wider diameter so that they can put more equipment in it. They could not do that on the existing base, so they are going to have to build a new base to that tower. While they do that, they're going to have to put up what are temporary, they call them cows, but they're temporary cell towers that will sit across the driveway from where that tower, where the existing tower is. Those would be up about 30 to 45 days until they complete putting the new tower up. In addition to the tower, right now that tower basically just sits on a base at the fairgrounds. Rodney Tissue, myself, Junior Mason, and Steve Bachmiller sat with the project manager from Chantel and asked them to do a couple of things. One would be take some stated responsibility in the painting of the tower. They, we've got that in the amendment, that they're responsible to paint the tower at least every five years, or if we agree before that time, they will come and paint it before then should it be necessary. Secondly, they're going to put a fence, a vinyl, six-foot vinyl, white vinyl fence around the tower to keep as much as they can people off the tower or trying to go up and, you know, trying to climb it or do whatever crazy stuff they would do. And all, and within that fencing, they're going to put a receptacle so that we would have a place to put flags once, they're, once, they're going to provide the flags for the, for the tower. When we need one, I will bring, we would put, bring the flag down, put it in this receptacle to store it, and then utilize the new flag that they send us. They are also going to provide us spotlight bulbs that we will, that staff would change out when necessary. And then also, they're going to keep up the, as much as, as much as they can, the landscaping inside to make sure the building remains in good condition. We would, staff would continue to work the outside of the grounds like we do now, but we've, we've got some more, some codification, so to speak, of, of some things we want Chantel to be able to do with that tower to make it look, you know, as nice as, as nice as it can.
Thank you.
The work would, it would take about 45 days. They would anticipate starting sometime in the next two weeks if they could, and be done by the end of April.
And once again, their rent's $5.50 a month?
Their rent is $5.50 a month. This is the first year that I've been responsible for, for the cell tower leases, and what I plan to do is to go through each of these leases and compare what similar type structures are being leased by from, from, whether it's the municipality or whoever owns the land that these towers are on, see if there's any opportunities there based upon any improvements that have been done around the sites and a need to, to look at potentially increasing what's being paid.
How tall are these cows, these cells on wheels?
They're going to be, I, I believe they're going to be between 60 and 70 feet.
And how are they secured? How do they keep from blowing over?
They're on a, I, I don't know how to really describe them too. They're on like a trailer base.
Oh, okay.
And they're going to be secured to the ground so that they, there should not, there should not be any, I've seen pictures of them, and they seem very, I mean, seem very secure.
Any other questions from the council members? All right. Guess we'll entertain a motion.
Just as a point of order.
Sure.
Do we need a motion to take it off the table? We've already made the motion, all right?
Good point.
The motion was made, and then it was tabled after it was made, so what we need, I believe, under the rules, is a motion to remove it from the table, and then simply to vote on the motion unless someone disagrees with me because I don't.
Point well taken. We will consider.
Motion to remove.
Motion's been made to remove it from the table and seconded. All those in favor of removing the motion from the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is now back on the table, and the motion's been made and seconded, so we'll be voting on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve an amendment for the Fairgrounds cell tower, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Back into regular order of our work session, and the first item of business is to honor Women's History Month. So at this point, I'm going to ask Granis Dixon from the Hagerstown Business and Professional Women, and Donna Smith from the Women's Club, Women's Club President, please step forward. And both these, hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Granis Dixon.
Hi, good to see you. So both of the proclamations read similarly, and I will read them aloud. This is National Women's History Month, March 2013. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, they served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement; and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions; and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas President Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8, 1980, as National Women's History Week, the same year Representative Barbara McCulkey, who at the time was in the House of Representatives, and Senator Orrin Hatch co-sponsored a congressional resolution for National Women's History Week in 1981. This co-sponsorship demonstrated the wide-ranging political support for recognizing, honoring, and celebrating the achievements of American women. And whereas this year's theme, Women Inspiring Innovation Through Imagination, recognizes American women's outstanding contributions to the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, commonly referred to as STEM. Now therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David S. Geisberts, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize the month of March 2013 as National Women's History Month, and encourage our citizens to observe this, this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplish, and contributions of American women. Thank you so much for coming here to, on behalf of all the women of Hagerstown and Washington County, and we appreciate all that you do for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Donna?
Thank you.
Maybe we could have you hold up the certificates, and we'll take a picture. Anybody else, if you want to come up and take a picture, please feel free? How about, how about we do a thorn between two roses?
All right. Unthreading, one, two. Perfect.
We got one more behind you there, I think.
Oh.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right here. Good to see you again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Glad you all could make it.
Yeah.
Next up, we have an offer of Greenfield Park in Collegiate Acres, and we have Mr. Jim Bender here representing our city engineering staff.
Good afternoon. Since 2004, the Beazer Homes Corporation has been developing the Collegiate Acres development or development, or sale management. It's a mix of residential uses, about 80 single-family residential lots, about, I believe, 250 or so townhouse lots, and there's also some additional parcels that are attached to Collegiate Acres that are not owned by Beazer that are slated for apartments. So the total build-out in that area is somewhere in the, in the range of 400-plus residential units. As part of the original subdivision plan for the development, the, the plan called for the setting aside of an open space area, which is about two acres in size, and there's a map or a plan in your packet titled Overall Plan of Subdivision that shows the, the whole layout for the development, and then highlighted in yellow is that open space area. As I said, that was part of the original development plan through approval by the planning commission. That area was always envisioned as being some sort of a park or, or play area with different amenities, possibly a gazebo, play equipment, walking trails, that sort of thing. Currently, Beazer is at about 70% build-out on what they have to do in the development, and they are making a real effort to try to finish their work, their development of the subdivision by 2014, or sometime early in 2014. And about two or three weeks ago, maybe a little bit longer, Beazer approached city staff with a proposition about this open space area. They wanted to gauge the city's interest in having that land actually transferred to the city and actually made a city park instead of remaining a, an open space area managed by the HOA in the development. And through several discussions with city staff, we sort of laid out what, from staff's perspective, what we thought would be some minimum requirements if this was even going to be considered. One was that Beazer would have to make the improvements in that open space area and provide play equipment, the, the gazebo, some landscaping, some of the amenities that are actually shown on the last, the last page in your packet, the colored rendering of, of what the park may look like. And as far as the, the equipment that we would see going, equipment or amenities going into the area, the city would require that they would be the same, meet the same standard as equipment or facilities going into any of our other public parks around the city. And so in talking with Beazer, going through this list of requirements, the estimate is that Beazer would end up spending about $275,000 to complete this open space area by the equipment finalized it. Beazer would then agree to transfer that land with all the improvements to the city, and at that point, the city would, would take it over as a city park, and then the city would assume maintenance of the park from then on. So that is basically what is being, being proposed or being offered, and staff felt it was important before we went too much further with this that we obviously bring it before the council and, and try to gauge the, the council's interest in, in moving forward with this, making that a city park, or if we would just have it remain an open space area managed by the HOA of the development. And there are representatives from Beazer Homes here today that will be glad to answer any questions or, or speak to any concerns that you may have.
Mr. Munson?
I think, myself, I think it's an excellent idea. I, I think one of the things that makes this attractive to me is the recognition that Hagerstown is just not what a lot of folks remember the old Hagerstown to be before annexations. We have folks in the city that live in the far western part of our community and in the far eastern part, and, and I think a city park in this area of town would be a very positive thing, and I have all the faith in the world that staff would work to ensure that this would be analogous to a road dedication. We would never accept the road unless it was built to our standards, and since we would be taking over the responsibility for it, I'm sure they would make sure that this would also be built to our standards.
Well, I, I don't agree or disagree at this point. I, I, it raises a lot of classic questions. There's already a number of HOA parks and improvements and recreational improvements which are private within those PUDs, within those homeowners association areas, and I think that there are issues that could develop between the homeowners, if, unless they're sufficiently informed that this is a city park and not their park, we're going to have clashes to begin with. I see that the parking is mixed in with the general parking, so, you know, there's potential issues. I see that the park is 70% complete. By that time, usually, although I, I understand that the developer usually maintains a majority in the early years of an HOA, I wonder if the homeowners association has been set up and whether they have agreed to this.
It might be best to have Beazer's representatives come up and speak to, I guess, the current state of the development. If you want to come up, please.
Hi. My name's Joanne Prilichardi. I am the HOA manager for Beazer Homes. I'm also the board president at the HOA. So I have had a meeting with all the homeowners. We have discussed this, and the way that it is, it is, is that the park, even at completion, even if it is an HOA park, we have to remain and keep it open to the public, which causes major increases to the insurance, which then has to be passed on to the HOA members, who at that point might not be able to afford the increase on their HOA dues. So that was one of the big concerns for them. The park is, of course, would be built to your standards. They're, the parking, we have already agreed to designate certain parking just to the park. So I believe it was eight or 10 spaces agreed to that would be designated and strictly only set aside for the park. It would be the hours that the city would maintain, so, and then there's areas beyond the park that we still also will maintain. So the homeowners felt that this was the best route for them also, so they were very excited about that.
Okay, and the parking area, is that an overflow parking area, or?
Yes, because they all have their own area. There would be areas that they would, for overflow and that they were looking forward to, but they already know, they were already told that they would be designated area for park only.
We, we need to realize that we could be sort of setting a precedent, which may be a good thing. It's good to have local parks, but we ought to be going into this with our eyes open. Jim, do you remember what Hagerstown Commons, the area behind the shopping center, do they have a public area in that?
You, I think you're referring to Hager's Crossing, behind the Walmart.
Hager's Crossing, yeah, behind the Walmart.
Because there is a Hagerstown Commons, and it's easy to, easy to get mixed up. There, to my knowledge, there's, it's sort of the same situation as, as here at Collegiate Acres. There are open space areas that are set aside, and they are managed by the HOA. They aren't specifically designated as a public area, although I don't know that there's any restriction on, you know, through the HOA for having the general public come in there.
But are they improved as parks or just open space areas?
Those are more, from what I've seen, those are more open spaces, more playing fields, you know, soccer field areas. Don't know that there are any big sets of play equipment or, or some of these other improvements that are being talked about here.
And my guess is that most anybody who wants to dedicate us a nice piece of land with a quarter of a million dollars' worth of investment for a public park would not be something, and I understand what you're saying about setting a precedent, and that's the precedent that I'm seeing, though, is not saying, geez, we've got this open space and we want to give it to you, but we're going to improve it, and with substantial improvements to your specs, and then give it to you, and that, I think, is the difference.
I have three questions, and the first is in relation to the parking, because on the drawing, it includes an athletic field, and we're all certainly well aware of the competition for availability of athletic fields. And when you look at this drawing, the first question that I, I would have is you've got this overflow parking area, you're going to proffer eight parking spaces within that, and then I look at an athletic field, and I guess my hope would be is that we wouldn't open an athletic field like this open to some type of organized play with the availability of eight parking spaces. I mean, I think we're setting ourselves up for disaster and complaint from the new citizens in those neighborhoods, especially if that accesses primarily to eight parking spaces at the end of a cul-de-sac within a, you know, residential subdivision. So for me, to accept this, I wouldn't accept the eight parking spaces because I, I think that what that will lend itself to then is the possibility of folks believing that there is the availability of league play here, which I think is, is, is not appropriate for a park located as it is and for that intended use. And then the second point that I have is, being familiar with the maintenance and operations of parks, you look at $20,000 a year, I would imagine with the proposed multi-area being the size that it is for that totlot area, while the equipment is certainly the, the initial capital investment, the clear operational cost is going to be in that mulch replacement, and so if we're going to accept something of that size and for this purpose, my recommendation would be in that acceptance that that not be a mulched area, that that be, if there's going to be some play area, that it be a matted area like they have at Marty Snook Park. Otherwise, we're going to be spending, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year, you know, in mulch.
Right. That can be changed.
Okay. And then the third point is, it makes it very clear in here, and as you, you've made the case yourself here in your comments, that there is a cost to the residents of this neighborhood through their HOA fees, through their city taxes, and through their county taxes. I would assume that the reverse can be, point would be made that if the city's going to assume both the insurance liability cost of these residents within this neighborhood for this parcel, and the operational cost of a park space in which they were going to assume at the completion of the development, that there would be some type of commensurate reduction in their HOA fees. Now, are their HOA fees going to still be the same even after we accept this two-acre, quarter of a million dollar investment?
Yes, because at this point, they're not priced out for the insurances. So everything that they have now in their dues is not with the additional costs of the insurance increasing and everything else at this point.
What types of services does the homeowners association cover?
The homeowner, well, it carries insurance for all the common areas, snow removal for common areas, because once you, right now Beazer covers the cost of the streets until you maintain that. Landscaping, monument, any monument work. We are required to maintain and take care of the common area on Terps Boulevard and landscape that, so we are now redoing all our signage there, so we are having landscaping in front of all our new signage that'll be on every entrance. I'm trying to think, insurances, collections, so attorneys, audits, taxes, the standards. There's not any other amenities other than this would be.
In terms of trash pick-up, the city?
The city does that.
Recycling. So the city's going to do plowing of, for snow removal, once the street system is accepted.
Right.
Trash service. Who maintains the stormwater management ponds?
We.
Once the development is accepted.
Stays with the, the HOA.
The HOA.
That stays with the HOA.
Yes.
Which, in my experience, has always been the most difficult item in, in terms of long-term maintenance responsibilities between the public and private ownership.
I guess I would say I'm not so much worried about the parking because I would hope that most people in this neighborhood aren't going to drive their car to play in this park. Now, I guess I could see how if people catch on to there's the fact that there's a multipurpose field here, you know, it may attract people coming from outside the neighborhood, but...
You don't want, I mean, you get organized soccer games in there on a Sunday, and now you've got 40 cars.
Right.
But we do have minimal parking requirements under zoning, right, for a park or not? Do we not need to?
There certainly are overall parking requirements for the development, just for a park itself. That's a good question that I don't honestly know the answer to without doing some research.
And, you know, my thoughts about parking is, I, I do think there should be parking there because I do think we should acknowledge this as a city park, and it's just not open to people who walk from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'd agree, at least the eight spaces they're talking about. I mean, if we're going to maintain it, the overall city tax dollars are going to go for it.
A good example would be our park in the north end, off, what's the name of the park? Off Woodland Way?
Mills Park.
Mills Park.
Mills Park. I mean, that's a neighborhood park, and we have, what, about eight or nine parking spaces there if I'm correct?
And so.
It sounds like similar size.
Have organized athletic play at that park?
No, not so much there. The, the one that I'm thinking of there where we, where the city does have organized play but doesn't have very good parking facilities would be the Hamilton Playground up behind WJEJ.
And I'm not suggesting there be organized games there. I mean, as far as city sponsored, as far as us, like we do with other places, I mean, Fairgrounds Park and others where you make reservations.
Well, it doesn't have to be organized to generate traffic. I mean, you can get a bunch of people formally want to set up a soccer game or something. You don't have it. You're going to have it, and they can, I presume that, I don't know whether there's, I can't recall whether there's street parking on these streets or not, but you may have some of that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, there's a lot of area out there. It's very nice. It's all very, very nice, so.
Well, thank you, and we've just done things to increase to have a more local homeowner actually purchase in the area instead of just having the community built where we're having a lot of commuters living in the community, but they're actually not local. We're doing it to, at a different price point to help a more local family who normally would rent be actually be able to purchase in the neighborhood. So we want it to be a more family-oriented area. We want the park to be successful and to be able to be maintained more properly by a city.
And I think too, from the eight parking spaces, I don't know that there was anything magical about that. I think it was a, it was a compromise between providing or designated some spaces that would go with the park but not eating up all of this overflow parking area that, that really belongs to the development. So I think there just happened to be eight parking spaces down along that edge closest to the park, and we said, why don't we designate those spaces as the, as the park spaces?
Sir, did you have?
Yes, I'm Tony Taylor with Frederick Cypress and Associates, really engineers for the project. If it would help ease some, some concerns about the parking, I'll take a look at the overall numbers of the parking required, and we can dedicate more parking along, there's 21 spaces that parallel Terps Boulevard there that's in that overflow parking. We can designate some more to the city if that would help ease some concerns.
And even if you, candidly, even if they weren't designated, as long as they're not excluded from use by people who are at the park, I don't know that you have to say these are exclusively there versus saying that they're, can't be used by park folks.
Right. Who assumes maintenance responsibility?
Of the parking.
Of the park?
The HOA does.
Am I correct? The parking pads are.
Yeah, I, I think we'd want to just make sure that that was in there if we agree to this because they'll have their blowers, they'll have their equipment out.
Right.
It'd be ridiculous for us to run in there.
No, that would be on us.
What we're going to do is, once, if this motion is approved, we're going to be creating a subdivision flat, and within that subdivision flat, the parking area will be used with the HOA, and we'll create an ingress, ingress exit to the city of Hagerstown for those parking spots.
Well, it sounds like we have perhaps a consensus. I haven't heard from Ms. Nye or Mr. Munson, but I think they just want to get a general sense of the council tonight.
I'll be.
Councilmember Nye?
As long as we have staff to maintain, and that's going to be crucial, because Junior, now, we've got a lot of parks, and, you know, I mean, we're probably talking more than just seasonal on this one. And, you know, I mean, we're probably talking more than just seasonal on this one, I would say. So.
Well, I think, I'm sorry, Don, that's a fair comment. You know, they'll easily run more than the 20,000.
Junior has been short for a long time and that's the thing, you know? I mean, this whole budget, you know, as it goes on, that's something that we really have to look at because the more that we get even pocket parks and, you know, every time you turn around, somebody wants a pocket park and we're maintaining them.
You make a good point, Penny. Although a census is going to be a brand-new park and up to the standards that we require, it's probably not going to take a great deal of maintenance in the initial years. Ultimately, it will. But I think Councilman Metzner's correct on this. I fully support taking this over. In my view, all parks ought to be public parks. I think that's one of the essential services of the local government, frankly. Speaking of which, Jim, maybe we need to be taking a look at Woodland Way as well.
One thing I'd add too is Beezer sort of needs a direction tonight to know if this is a possibility. And I think you're giving us some sort of an idea on that. It's important to note though that they're not looking at finishing their part of the development. You know, it's going to be over the next year and I doubt that the park is going to be completely finished, you know, probably before the end of this year, I would think. You know, so it's, I mean, so it's not going to be, you know, if they, they're not going to move ahead and have the park ready by June 1st. It's going to, it would take some time for this to be.
On the other hand, it's not like we're going to have a whole lot more money two years from now than we do now either, to be honest.
Are there going to be utility services to the park and who would be responsible for the cost associated with it?
Good question.
There are, we had discussions about that, looking at where the existing utilities are that serve the residential lots and how they could be brought into, say, the gazebo or the totlot area. And I'm not exactly sure at this point what we decided as far as what services would be needed. There are going to be trail lights, street lights basically along some of these trails, pedestrian lights.
So was it presumed prior to this council being considered taking over this park that those lighting systems would be the cost of the HOA or the city on this path system?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the pedestrian lights were part of the original, part of the original plan. The thought now is if the city is taking it over, the city would assume those costs.
Is that included in our $20,000 estimate?
Yes.
Okay. And then water and sewer?
There aren't any restroom facilities being proposed as part of this. There may be some water. I think we're still talking about whether there's need for irrigation.
Do we have any minimum requirements associated with the construction of public parks as it applies to provision, minimum provisions for restroom facilities?
I don't believe there are because the parks are so varied in their size. For instance, Greenawall Park, you know, very small park, a pocket park is going to have different requirements than a two-acre park or a five-acre park. So no, I don't believe that there are any specific written requirements on that.
If this, if this field, this competitive field becomes so popular that all the groups in Washington County decide to have to converge on it, isn't there some way to allocate times, take times to the various groups?
Yes, there is. I mean, it would be, all of the facilities or improvements here would be treated the same as the improvements in any of our other parks and they are managed, reserved, you know, scheduled through our, through the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you. And so, Jim, if we were to move forward on this, we need to draft an ordinance as well as some kind of an agreement for the transfer of the property and the conditions related to that?
I think further down the line, the process would be having a subdivision plant that actually identifies explicitly the land that would be transferred and any easements that are required. And then, yes, there would have to be an ordinance for the city to accept that transfer. I'm not sure in the interim what Beezer may need other than just sort of a consensus or nod of the head, whether or not you would need some sort of a letter or some action by the council to give you comfort to move ahead on this. So you'd like a letter or a motion or a resolution or some action by the council?
We would prefer if we have a resolution, we saw, we can proceed with the subdivision plant and then we can proceed with the execution in the field.
I couldn't really hear. Could someone repeat?
We'll need a resolution, is what he's indicating.
So we can give the okay to continue to have the flat strong subdivision plan?
I just want to make sure that we get what we truly need and we get it upfront. You know, in terms of the utilities and all those things, electrical connections, everything. You know, so that down the road, it's like, well, you didn't say that on your, you know, your March meeting. Because right now, we're sort of saying, we'd like to make this work, is what I'm hearing.
Well, yes, staff has had several discussions with Beezer to sort of flush this out. There are some details that we do need to make sure everybody's on the same page and that the city is, you know, getting everything that we require. But I think through our discussions, I think we've reached that point. We just need to put it in writing.
Right, that would be in the resolution.
It would be our responsibility as the city, putting a restroom in. You're going to have to have a restroom. If you're opening this up as a city park, there's got to be a restroom.
Does Mills Park have a restroom?
But that's not a, that is basically a neighborhood park where the people that go there are close by that they can go back home. But you have play there, Lou.
I have to think this is going to be a neighborhood park.
I think that it's going to be both.
What kind of restroom facilities do we have a paying warrant?
What is there? Just the one?
There's restrooms there at the back.
In the pavilion there.
In the city park.
Fairgrounds, city park.
Right. Fairgrounds Park. And how large is this?
The whole property's about two acres.
Okay, so what is Fairgrounds?
Well, Fairgrounds is about 80 acres.
Okay. So give me two acres.
Mills Park.
Give me, show me two acres. Reed Park over at Fairgrounds, where the dog park's going to go.
That would be approximately it, the Ridge Avenue Playground area on the south end of town off of Berhens Boulevard, near Vaisal Boulevard. There's a.
Back ground the moped shop.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know there was one there.
That's a.
Weston, I think, up at Helane.
I'm not sure what the land area there is, but it's basically a playground area, pavilion. Don't believe there's a restroom facility there.
I don't think we're going to have a resolution tonight.
No.
But at least to get the sense, it sounds like there is a consensus that we would be willing to accept the offer of the park with some conditions about parking and utilities being straightened out and, I guess we'll leave the issue of a restroom for now. But if the staff want to consult with the homeowners association and the developer about that, then bring back the issue, I guess, at a near-future council meeting?
I'm not sure how quickly it needs to move, whether it would need to be this month or if it could go to April. I mean, it could be, we'll try to do it as quickly as possible.
So we'll look forward to that resolution then.
Can I ask one final question? Do you know, when you go to the mall sometimes and you look over the banks of the mall, they have more trash than this state dump over there because when the wind blows, when the wind blows, it blows all the paper.
Especially Garland Row.
It would be nice to guarantee that this park never, that that never happens at this park. If we have a series of windy days like we've been having recently, whose responsibility is it to pick up the individual pieces of trash that are laying all over this park?
Well, the, part of the $20,000, the maintenance cost is to do, have city staff, parks, personnel do trash removal. And once this facility became a city facility, that would be part of their duties, not only to empty the trash cans, but to go around and pick up loose trash, loose paper that's flying around. So that would be a city responsibility as well if it's trash that's in the park or was generated in the park.
And if it became too much of a burden, is there any reason why the homeowners association couldn't help set up some kind of a program to help do that?
I think that's very fair and part of a committee that homeowners like to do as committees.
I mean, it would be nice to think it takes a pride in our neighborhood.
And that's the whole point. We would love to. And I think as you spoke to having some issues between homeowners and the park, I think there really becomes more issues if the city doesn't take over the park. Because then there's, if it's just the HOA, then we're not allowed in parking spaces. Then you're still going to have people coming and parking and then there's going to be the problems with your in my parking spaces. And if they're leaving trash, then it's, we're constantly cleaning up. And I think that's going to be much more of an issue between the HOA and the city then with being public because then they, you know, it's, they're covering everything and then they're, they're just having other people come in. So I think you actually cut down on the dissension and the disappointment of homeowner issues by allowing the city to take the park. I think you solve more than you create.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
We'll look forward to another update soon. All right, the next item on our agenda is workers' compensation brokerage services, Mr. Kevin DeHaven.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to do an action request, change things up from what we've done the past 11 years that I've been here. Typically, we go out.
Kevin, could you speak just a little louder, please?
Sure.
The microphone doesn't help.
Not working? Is that good?
Now it is.
All right, thanks.
Now it is. Now you're close to it.
Typically, what we do is we take the workers' comp out to bid and we allocate the different insurance companies to individual brokers. In this case, we want to take the broker out to bid, form a committee that selects the broker based on the criteria that they meet for our RFP and have them shop the insurance from there. And we would base our selection on the services they provide and primarily fees.
Sounds good.
And really, what precipitates most of this is we've seen our rates for workers' comp from police, fire, not so much clerical, but our municipal rate has risen with IWhif through the years. And for the first time since I've been here, we've crossed over the $1 million plateau for premium.
The idea is to create more of a competitive process to try to drive down the cost.
That's what we're hoping for and we're hoping that from that standpoint, we can get broker services above and beyond what we've had in the past and even with the current broker to offer services that they haven't, but at a good cost.
Everyone in favor of that? It looks like we have a clear consensus.
Yep.
All right. That was quick. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, it really helps when people use the mic.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the faith community outreach. We have our fine staff from the Department of Community and Economic Development here.
Good evening. I first want to recognize some folks in the audience who we've been meeting with. Tonight, we have the Reverend Greg Mizrowl from Christ Reform Church, Reverend Terry King from Bridge of Life, and Mrs. Kathy Powderly from Hark. And they've been participating in the meetings over the past several months with us, as well as some other members of the faith community. Just as a quick introductory comment and then John and Sarah will kind of bring you up to date on where we are in discussions. We're not asking for any formal approval of anything tonight, rather just to brief you on the discussions that staff have been having. The, from a staff perspective, and I believe we're on the same page with the members of the faith community that we've been meeting with, we are not talking about expanding subsistence programs. The goal that has emerged, as the memo addresses, is to address the concentration of poverty in the core of the city and to have healthy conversations about the lower education attainment in the core of the city. And the conversations are linked between sustainable communities and sustainable churches. The churches are anchors here in the downtown and the faith community plays a very important role in nurturing the downtown and partnering with the city and private partners on figuring out ways to overcome our barriers and to have a more sustainable community.
And just to reiterate on what John said, we're simply here to update the mayor and council on the recent outreach efforts with the faith community. This has been spearheaded by Sarah Johnson between the faith community and Department of Community and Economic Development. I think it's safe to say the faith community is an anchor in our downtown. They have numerous buildings throughout the downtown. They take up much of the streetscape and they bring quite a significant amount of visitors to our downtown every week. Recognizing that impact that they have on downtown and recognizing the shared interest between the city of Heggestown and the faith community, that, you know, we have an interest in a healthy community. And as John had mentioned, the concept to initiate that dialogue was sustainable communities equals sustainable churches. And with that said, I will let Sarah update you on where we stand with our meetings with the faith community.
Excuse me. The initial intent of the conversation was to ask the, us core members, core members of group leadership in the downtown, how do we go about addressing the broader faith community around the idea of sustainability, specifically in the downtown? And through our conversations, we talked about the possibility of kind of broad-level outreach to the faith community versus a more focused approach that would center on a particular issue or idea. And what's kind of emerged from those conversations is that a more focused approach may be the way to go as we look to address the broader community. And during our conversations, what we've kind of come back to over and over again is both a recognition and a desire to address the issues related to concentration of poverty and educational attainment of our residents, seeing that as a root cause of a lot of the issues that we're facing in the downtown. Of our residents 25 years and older in the core, 17% haven't graduated from high school. It's something that's also recognized in the skip document that was created for the county, educational attainment and workforce readiness are both goals of that as well. And so our conversation has headed in a direction that looks at whether or not we continue to look at developing a facility that addresses job training and life skills and GED training of our residents in the core. And how do we go about creating a public-private partnership around these, around these issues? We focused on dreaming big in our conversation as it progresses and looking to models like Bill Strickland in Pittsburgh, who's Manchester Bidwell Center created job training for ex-steel workers in the community and has really contributed to increased employment and appreciation of property values in the area where they're located. And so as we move forward, we're looking at meeting with Bill and their replication division, staff are thinking about taking a trip up there to meet with them and look at what they're doing there, as well as expanding the conversation to the broader faith community and also to the private sector. And also looking at interim ways that the faith community and the city can work at these issues of GED and career training and empowering of our residents in the meantime as this kind of idea and conversation progresses. So we will continue to update you as things progress and.
And the only other comments I would have, this is part of our overall community engagement. And we've been reaching out much more to the business community over the last few years, reaching out to the neighborhood groups more and more. And this is a natural progression of. And this is a natural progression of engaging the stakeholders in the community. And the concept of partnering with the faith community is not something new. The, the White House has an Office of Faith-Based Initiatives. HUD has, has programs to encourage partnerships with faith, with faith-based organizations. And from, from a staff perspective, we, we see this as a valuable partnership to, to get a, a healthy dialogue going in terms of creating a more sustainable community. And, and the feedback that we've received from the churches and their involvement so far, it, it's been incredible. And I, I really want to thank the, the folks that are here today and the, and the others that have participated in the conversation so far. We're, we're making some good progress and having some, some difficult conversations at times over some of the shared issues that we face in, in poverty and that, and, and finding a way to work more closely together.
Well, I have to say, to start, I really appreciate the effort that you're undertaking and, and the participation of the, the members of the faith community engaging with the city. I think everybody recognizes the socioeconomic difficulties of a big portion of our residents, and there is no easy solution, but I think it's, it's important that the public know that we are addressing it. I do have a couple of questions. How does what you're proposing differ, you know, the concern over the concentration of subsistence services, how is what you're talking about different from what you're calling a subsistence service? In other words, the job training, those kinds of things, does anything like that already exist in the city, and how does that differ from a subsistence service?
A couple of thoughts. One, we have a number of GED programs that, that exist. We have some job training efforts in the community that exist. And part of what we're undertaking now is, is figuring out exactly what's out there, and whether or not those programs can be tweaked and become more accessible. And, and that's something that, that we're gathering that information on. But I, I would say, looking at the Bill Strickland model, and we still need to learn more about this model, but I, I would encourage viewers at home to, to Google Bill Strickland and watch, and watch him on YouTube. The success that he has, it goes beyond job training in, in terms of, for example, his culinary arts program. It is not producing cafeteria workers. They make gourmet food, and they conduct catering. And it's, part of this is giving people hope as well as a skill. His training center, for example, he talks about having water and fresh flowers, because poor people need water and fresh flowers, the same as people of means. And from a community development standpoint, we have segments of our community that need hope. And that's, that's where there's a real natural connection between, from a staff level, and, and connecting with the faith community. So, so I see the programs as, as being much different. Subsistence, and, and I'm, I'm not the, the person to get biblical, th, those folks are behind me, but I, I do think it's, it's more in teaching someone how to fish, as, as opposed to handing out the, the fish. And, and, and that's what we're talking about here.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Well, John, you used the fish thing. I was gonna use the fish thing, so thanks for stealing it.
The fish thing?
You said it much more eloquently than I would have.
It's one of the few-
But it's, it actually is, the focus sounds good. But as a practical matter, in these other communities, where has the funding and the support, the practical stuff you have to get together, the volunteer coordination or whatever goes, where's that come from?
Well, what, what Bill has done, hi, his partnerships, as far as we know, have not involved the faith community. But here, we, we view our faith community as such an integral part of the downtown that it's important to have, have their involvement, whether it could be for cadres of volunteers, things of that nature. We hope to learn more about Bill's model when we visit Pittsburgh, but in, in reading on his website, he has gone after big money. He's gone after foundations, you, he's gone after compact, I think, for computers, Steelcase for, for, for cubicle office-type furniture. Now, in Pittsburgh, he has larger foundations, he reached out to Heinz for a kitchen, things of that nature. But I, I think a lot of that is yet to be seen. Operationally, there may be opportunities to partner with local foundations or endowments. There, there may be opportunities for, for faith community members to come together and, and to raise funds, to, to marry with perhaps some federal funds, depending on, on the results of the federal budget, in, in terms of, from HUD's faith-based programs.
Right, and, and you're talking about something that isn't perceived as a shelter, isn't perceived as the, the flowers and the water and all.
Yes.
Because, because I, you know, I've been involved, not just with Habitat, but with literacy training, and, and half the problem is getting people just to show up and, and try, you know, it's, it's an iterative process, and you gotta have the right program. It's difficult, that's what I'm saying.
And, and, and I think that, that we recognize, and I'll speak for the group, that we recognize that this is going to be difficult.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think it's good to have the conversations, and one of the things that the faith community is talking about doing is learning more of what each church or house of worship is actually doing. And, and inventorying the services that they, they currently offer, and looking for efficiencies, so we can have improvement in the education attainment or job training now, as we look forward to, to, to building a dream, and then making that dream a reality in terms of, of having a, a facility that would house more job training and programs for, to address the education attainment.
Well, I'll second the mayor. I commend you and, and the members of the community that are working with you to trying to bring things like, for thinking outside the box and trying to get things together and trying to focus on the right targets, I think.
Let me just say this, too. I, I commend you. I think this is a great effort. The best social program in the whole world, when you get right down to it, is a paycheck. But it's not, it's not unprecedented in our community. When City Court moved here, there was a man down on Jonathan Street, his name was Mickey Tolliver, perhaps some people around this table or elsewhere knew him. And he took it upon himself, he was just a citizen, and he took it upon himself to train African-American women, so they would have the tools to work at City Court. And it worked. It worked. His entire first class of women, every one of them got jobs at City Court, and his entire second class did as well. So I think there's some real good possibilities here, John.
I agree. Thank you all. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to offer, questions?
You know, and, and I believe that, that the mayor and I are gonna meet with the group in March. The Hark group, which, you know, is, is a larger conglomerate of the entity, but, you know, some of the things I think that we recognized coming into office that are specific to the religious entities downtown are that they make up a, a significant part of the property downtown, that the congregations, much like many other organizations, are aging, in some cases are shrinking. And I think that it is as integral to ensure those traditional, traditional religious entities downtown, long-term sustainability as it is our, our governmental partners, our educational partners, and our private businesses. So, you know, whatever comes of that at the end of the day, I think we need to keep that in mind, that, you know, we've got a number of, of organizations and entities downtown that have significant properties downtown, important locations downtown, and so that, just having that line of communication open. And I use this example, now that I'm much more familiar with it, having three little ones, that there are waiting lists, literally two- and three-year-long waiting lists to get into preschool, nursery school-type settings for parents out there. And, you know, I have, I have several friends that are sort of planning their children on when they can get children in, you know, two years from now in some of these locations. And clearly, you know, our, our children at Rehoboth and Williamsport, so I use as that example, that, you know, there are clearly those institutions that exist downtown, in downtown Hagerstown, that folks would love, parents like myself would love to bring their children to, and, and have in that learning environment. And so just in that one caveat alone, I think we need to be able to work with those entities and remove the, the barriers, to the extent we reasonably can, from those types of opportunities happening. Because I think it speaks to, to their ability to diversify their, their sustainability in the community. So that, I think, is just one example, you know, of, of many that, that we need to look at.
Anyone else?
We will continue the conversation, then, with the faith community. Staff are planning a, a field trip to, to Pittsburgh to, to tour this, this center, and we will endeavor to make sure the mayor and council are, are kept up to date on any conversations or developments that we have.
Excited to go with you. Will you let us know when you plan that trip?
Uh, yes.
That'd be great. And next Tuesday is when we're meeting with the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, so I am definitely looking forward to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is 4353 West Washington Street.
Good evening.
If I could just briefly give a, an intro, and then Andrew can kind of walk us through the status of where we are and, and what we're hoping to do here. As we've discussed over the, the last several months, the, the property in question, it appears to be two buildings, it's all on one parcel. You have a three-story level and a four-story level. The three-story side is in, in pretty rough shape, we talked about that. And the, it's unlikely to, to, to see significant investment to reverse that deterioration unless, unless it's really acted upon. The, the current owner is Hagerstown Table Corporation, and the, the owner, over the X number of years, I believe 17 years, the, the property has continued to deteriorate, and that's why we are proposing that the, that the city acquire the property. And we've had discussions with representatives from the, the owner that have resulted in a, a letter of intent. And Andrew, if you want to walk us through-
Sure. Hopefully someday I'll bring you some pretty pictures to look at. But we have, we have 43 through 53 under a letter of intent for a purchase price of $320,000. Funds for that will become, will come from the CDBG and community legacy, legacy funding. We have a proposed schedule of acquisition. In a special session next week, we hope to introduce a new ordinance, and a week from that approve an ordinance, and then settle as early as April 22nd. As a part of this, we've been in contact with Ally and Nathan Buckman, who own Potomac Bead Company. They are, they have, currently have a first right of refusal to purchase the entire property from Hagerstown Table Corporation for $337,000. They don't want to take on such a big project, but they are very interested in the, the space that they currently occupy and the vertical space above them. They would, their grand vision is to personally occupy the fourth, fourth floor and, and live and work in that same building. So part of the plan, they, and they currently have a first right of refusal to, to purchase the entire property, as I said. So the scenario would hopefully play out like this, with, with your approval. The Buckmans would rescind their current right of first refusal. The city then acquires the entire property, and Buckmans remain tenants of the city for a time. And then the city subdivides the property, and there's a light graphic in the packet there talking about how the, the property was subdivided. But we've subdivided the property, go through the, through that. And then after subdivision, offer the Buckmans back the right of first refusal for their portion of the building for three years, at $225,000, a price that allows them funding to, to develop their property as, into what they, into their vision, frankly. So, and then staff will come back to the mayor and council with a redevelopment plan for the remaining portion of the property. And should, and then should point out that we have been, we've been approached by a, a local businessperson who's expressed an interest in acquiring that other portion of the property, and, and he, he would be using, he'd renovate it for a, for a nice restaurant downtown. That's where we stand. I'd like to see if there's support to continue here.
And what we would be seeking from you tonight is direction to finalize the, the contract agreement in, in line with the terms of the letter of intent that we have with the owner. Mr. Naren has been working on that contract, and then we would offer that contract for introduction next week, and then approval the following week, and then, as per the schedule, go to settlement in, towards the end of April. The, the other component of this is, in our current year budget, and we would, it's community development block grant funds, we would likely have to carry it over to next year, just going through the procurement, but we, we have an additional $45,000 designated for demolition of the rear portion of, of that, there's a bump-out section on, on the 53 side, and, and that would-
Is there with the tower?
Yes, yes.
Oh, right.
And, and that would go towards that. And then in our proposed community development block grant budget, we have $100,000 that we're proposing to remove the barriers, whatever they may be, to redevelopment of the, the three-story section.
John, if you could, just to clarify, community legacy funding's already been approved by the state.
Yes. The, the previous administration approved us applying for the funds for, for this project, and then the state has approved that application. We have $100,000 in community legacy funds tied to this property.
And, and the CDBG is, is ours to use as long as we do it within regulations, so-
Yes, sir.
We're not applying.
And, and this property, in 2011, the mayor and council reauthorized, if you will, a target investment area for community development block grant funds, and this property is clearly within the boundaries of that area. The area is primarily the core.
If, if everything goes on schedule, how soon can you start deconstructing the stuff behind the buildings nearest the courthouse?
I, I would say, sir, if, if we, if we have clear direction this evening, and, and as long as the, we don't hit any bumps with the, the seller, I, I would think mid, midsummer we could be back with a contract, and hopefully see at least the demolition work occur by, by the end of summer, maybe into the early fall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just two points. The first is, is as we talk about these issues, it would be beneficial, at least for me, if we had some type of, of ability to look at a larger picture somewhere-
at least for me, if we had some type of ability to look at a larger picture somewhere. I don't know where you put it in here, but, you know, every time I get this sort of eight-and-a-half by eleven and trying to, you know, situate it within downtown, being able to see that on a larger screen and see the bigger picture, if you will, is helpful. I don't know who's in charge of that.
That's something that we can do from now on, sir.
The second point is one that I'm just going to put out there, because I've been putting it out there, to anybody that'll listen, and everybody can tell me it's a dumb idea at the end of the day, and that's fine. There's a lot of ideas that are dumb. But my preference in our acquisition of this property has always been that we would deconstruct forty-three West Washington Street and open that as a gateway to this rear area. And if everybody could maybe just follow along for two minutes in this sort of thought process, and open that up into this rear area where you would have an open courtyard feel to it, similar to what you have with the university and its next door. And I know we saw a presentation this morning of the location of a possible Board of Ed on Washington Street, but the idea would be that, much like that back window at the library, if you recall our visit there, where that back window looks over what is right now the ugly Massey Building, but hopefully will overlook a courtyard itself at some point, that this new building would overlook a nice courtyard back there. The reason for that is severalfold, and I shared this with John earlier this morning, and I've been sharing it with a lot of folks, is if you had a courtyard back there, it ties that block into an area where you look out of a new Board of Education building into this nice, open area. It allows the district court to expand and look out into that area, and then dual facades that new building, whether it's the Board of Ed or some other private venture, next to the Columbia Bank Lot, which will be a parking deck at some point, according to the mayor's comments this morning. And then it would look, it would also serve as sort of a focal backdrop to Bispha and the Maryland Theater. And sort of to complete that circle, the line of sight, if you will, from that Board of Ed building through this courtyard, between the backside of Maryland Theater and the district court and the parking deck, would be those blighted properties on Antietam and spur redevelopment and reinvestment in that location, because that is the gateway, or this would create a gateway, if you will, directly from the university, through that area, past the Board of Ed, beside the district court, around the corner to the library, and tie that together. So that's, that is just one idea, and the idea and the impetus that I would have in supporting our purchase of the property, but I believe that you have to open that up and create that interconnectivity. And you have to be strategic about the buildings that you select to do that. And clearly, as Andrew points out in these pictures, there is no other building on that block that cries for that level of deconstruction as this forty-three West Washington Street building. So.
I would refer councilmember to a plan that our planning director has referred to as the market walk. It would actually link farther beyond the university north to the city market, which is-
Right, from Chevy Chase and then north.
Correct.
Porto would serve to connect that.
So I think it's a good idea. I have a question about this photo right-
Your plan didn't envision tearing, bringing the whole building down, did it?
Correct. Right. And I'm not saying that I necessarily support tearing the whole building down.
And you can do, Kristen's idea does have a lot of promise, but at the same time, you can realize part of it by doing the backyards of those buildings in front on that alley. And, you know, that lends a lot to it by improving those spaces.
Or even having a pass-through, an indoor pass-through.
Well, an indoor pass-through, and then have a courtyard in the back areas where we're tearing the one thing down.
And I totally agree with him that-
But I'm not, you know, I think we need to bat this around.
Sure.
I'm getting out of order here, I think.
Let me ask one question. This picture right here, in the top right-hand corner on the back of the packet, is that a, what is that?
You're looking at-
Looks like open air.
That's part of the building.
That's inside between forty-three and fifty-three?
It was a single-story section, and that would be forty-three West Washington. And the roof had collapsed in that section and subsequently simply removed.
The courtyard's almost there, except for the front piece.
There you go.
Well, there's, that can be used. I think that's what Kathy was-
Yes, sir.
Or the planning director was referring to.
The one thing that I will point out, the community legacy application talked about the possibility of creating a walkway through the building, but envisioned along the lines of, for example, the Potomac Walk. And if the plan were to change from that to a less intrusive plan, for example, if a building was to simply be redeveloped for a private use, I wouldn't see any issue with us getting state approval for that. If the plan were to bring down the whole building, we would have to get state approval for that, because we're using community legacy funds.
Bring down the little bit of it that's left.
Yes. But if we were to bring down that section, we would just have to get state approval. And I'm just, I want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
In other words, you'd have to maintain the facade.
Well, we would have to follow state input on that. The MHT would weigh in, and the, I think the takeaway is, absent approval of that, we may have to pay the state back their $100,000 if we have plans that are contrary to the approved plans now. And if it's something that we can't get approval for, then that $100,000 may have to be given back.
John, just to clarify, we don't have approved plans, but we had an application approved, so we've got to be consistent with that application.
Correct.
And the application had the walk-through feature.
And the application laid out the concept of having the walkway.
And this is the building that there may be an interest as far as a restaurant, correct?
Currently, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And how-
And is that person looking to eventually maybe buy?
Well, and right now, I think I would describe the interest as conceptual, and the, what was conveyed to us and was that they would like to acquire that building, put a restaurant on the first floor, and their private living quarters on the upstairs. That was the concept that was presented.
Right.
And as with many of these deals, lots of moving parts and lots of things to flesh out.
Well, and there are a dozen buildings in readily acceptable fashion to do that in downtown in a much more amenable timeframe than this structure. And that's a reality.
One more clarification on this particular portion where there's no, where it's open air. That's not the entirety of the forty-three-
No.
-West Washington, correct?
No, we're looking right through the middle of it. We're looking towards the front picture window of the, what was retail store.
But there are two, there are basically two retail storefronts in just forty-three, correct?
That's correct. We're looking through towards one of them.
There's only half of the forty-three.
Yeah. So to the left-hand side of that picture is another storefront and enclosed area, all the way from front to the back.
Which are in these other pictures below it.
That's correct.
So, I just want to comment that I think this is a great example of the city taking a leadership role, addressing blight in our neighborhoods where the private property owner or any other private property developer are not stepping in, but also with the goal of getting it back into private hands. So I think that this is a really worthwhile effort, and I appreciate your efforts in making this happen, and I hope the council will support it.
And Mr. Kearns just pointed out to me that with the community development block grant funds involved, MHT would weigh in on demolition of any portion of the building, whether it's that rear portion, which we don't see that as an issue, or anything else. The Maryland Historic Trust will weigh in.
Of course they will.
I'm unclear about something.
Yes, sir.
If the restaurant takes, should end up taking this forty-three facility, would that preclude the walk-through?
I would say right now, sir, the answer would be no, but it's because everything's conceptual at this point. The folks that we met with, they are coming back with an architect. They had a builder go through the building with them, but they're going to work with their design professional. It's possible that both could occur.
Are they aware of that possibility, and that it was in the application of the state?
We're having open discussions with them, and we will continue to. I would say that they're aware that this is all conceptual at this point.
Yeah, but they need to be aware of that-
Yes, sir.
-walk-through thing. I mean, that was far enough along even last year when we applied for the grant. Although I don't want to lose them. See if we can work.
But the walkway, the walkway is not going to be in any way like bulls and bears that they have, that is known as the walk there. It's not going to be that size frame. So, that's my concern. Can they use what they have then as going into a restaurant? Because those buildings connect. I mean, everything connects there.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Right? Right?
Having a public walk-through that's linked into the building.
Oh, I didn't say that it wasn't. I said I want to know if it is feasible for it to be there, and then to have enough that a restaurant, that, you know, it's not going to interfere with that whole operation.
Well, that's what, yeah.
And I think there's-
Calm down, Marty.
From a staff perspective, I think there's lots of unanswered questions at this point, and lots of things for us to explore.
I just would hate to see a prospect, and knowing that there really isn't any restaurants along that now. And then looking also at what, which is the courtyard back of and all of that, that I hope somebody looks at something going on there.
And currently, there is, albeit a narrow walkway between the two buildings, because you have a stair tower in the front that's between the two buildings, and then you can actually walk to the outdoors and then back into the building in the rear. So, depending on the desire of the council for how wide a walkway would be desired in that. But as we flush this out, we can come back with various options. Is the council generally okay if we finalize a contract for acquisition, knowing that the plan would be as outlined in here, to give the Potomac Bead Company first right of refusal for the two twenty-five for the four-story section?
As long as you do it, as long as you do it yesterday.
We will try, sir.
I believe we have unanimous consent in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Righty then. Next item on the agenda is the West Washington Street redevelopment project, which sort of is a segue from what we were talking about just now. And I think that the way I'd like to frame this discussion is really in this whole, in the context of an overall downtown plan, which is actually our next item on the agenda, but they all sort of fit in together. So, this morning at the State of the City, we rolled out our plan to entice the Board of Education to relocate their central offices to downtown. The idea would be that the city would be interested in acquiring the Columbia Bank and the Susquehanna Bank Buildings, because the goal would be to keep forty-three fifty-three in private hands. The idea that Mr. Alshar was talking about with creating more of a street-front facade type of orientation in the rear of the buildings facing Washington Street, the construction of a parking deck, which is likely needed regardless of what entity would be moving down into a downtown location. Basically, in order for that whole block to be fully utilized, some kind of parking structure would have to be put into place. You have the old Shockley Building there. You have the, all the empty storefronts along Washington Street. We have residential and commercial, the Maryland Theater, the Barbara Ingram School on Potomac, and then, of course, both courthouses. So, in my line of thinking, this block becomes ground zero for our downtown redevelopment efforts. And it starts with the projects that we're talking about with forty-three fifty-three, and also with the relocation of Board of Education offices. So, that's why I wanted this particular agenda item to be placed here, but also to further the conversation about the effort to relocate the Board of Ed. And I think what's important is, you know, we've laid out an area that basically has a 40,000, I think it's 42,000 square foot footprint with the two bank properties, and, which would be more than adequate for an employment center employing over 200 people, if not twice that many. So I think regardless of whether the Board of Education makes the right choice in coming downtown, or if they choose not to, I think this will be a project, the likes of which we're looking for, which is to have new construction in the downtown to attract a large employment center. So, would anyone like to have any discussion, any comments about that? You missed the whole conversation, Mr. Alshar.
I heard. Let's speak in the bathroom.
Oh, great.
Well, Kristen, do you want to? It's all right. I'll start. You know, and I've been involved in quite a few of the meetings talking about this, and there's a lot of potential there. A lot of potential on that block. I think we should move forward, but we really also have to balance what we can do with what we can afford. I believe your parking structure is going to cost $8 million, plus or minus, depending on our size, a million, maybe more. And if the minimum number of spaces for the board is guaranteed, or we give them, that's 200 spaces. That's going to be maybe two-fifths, or as much as 50% of that cost. And we need to weigh that with other things that we could do. I think there might be some other solutions, depending on how the board is financing its project. There might be a possibility of ramped debt service in the out-years that would help us bring this about, because even the other spaces in there that are available to the general public and therefore usable to the other businesses will not come close to paying for themselves. So we'll be, Aunt Suzie will be subsidizing those as well. And my final concern when, is building a parking garage on spec with only the board as a guaranteed client, and they're not a paying client. To the last mayor, I said, "I'll listen to a parking garage if you can get some, if not all, of the surrounding private property owners to participate." Instead, I've heard that one owner said, "Well, if you build that garage, I'm going to raise the selling price of my building by three times." He didn't say he'd improve the building. He didn't say he'd do it. He'd just sell it for spec, and we're still stuck with a rotten building without any commitment to match our commitment. And so, I'm concerned that, and I know that the board has put us on the spot of having to respond in a very short period of time. I would like to see some of the surrounding property owners, you mentioned a few, involved, or else we, as the developers, I suppose, are the ones that are going to have to be involved or reap the profit. So I, and a final concern I have is, we have budget items at the end, but we still don't have the overview of the budget. We still don't have bond capacities over the next five years, and, you know, how much we have in reserve once we do this project. I really would like to know that and not use my personal estimates. I think it's better to have that. I think it's better to have that from the staff. My concern is, and the parking garage consultants put it very clearly. They said, you build a garage on speculation and spend your bucks on that, you may not have enough when you get the right client in another part of town. You may not have the bond capacity, the resources to assist that client, you know, that's coming behind it where there's a real need and maybe it's even private enterprise. So I think we should keep moving ahead, but I think we somehow need to put this in context of what we can afford. And I don't think, you know, I've seen those materials yet. And, you know, once again, it's the average taxpayer of Hagerstown. I want to do things that have a return on investment. I think the average taxpayer, if they can see a return on investment, are willing to help, not totally do the whole thing, but they need to see that. Because for all aspects of this, that's who's going to be paying for it.
I appreciate your due diligence towards being fiscally responsible. And I think everybody here wants to do that same thing. And I think this is, again, one of those opportunities that's ripe for significant public-private partnerships. Any other council members like to chime in on this one?
Are you suggesting, in your comments of a few moments ago, that we select the block that you were referring to and turn that into an official project by city government?
I don't know quite what you mean by an official project.
That would be where most of our resources go.
I'm not suggesting that that's where most of our city resources go. I'm suggesting that if the city is prepared to acquire and prepare the site where the current two bank buildings exist and that we are looking at building a parking deck, that we should focus on this block as the first element in a block-by-block approach in our designated area downtown, which we can designate. We haven't yet, as a body, laid down any demarcations of where we want this focus to be. But I think everybody agrees we need a plan for redevelopment of downtown. Everybody wants us to come up with this plan. And so I think what I'm saying is this block, with the opportunities that we have right now in front of us, and I'm talking about not only what we're trying to do on West Washington Street, but also what's happening on Potomac Street with the possible expansion of the Barbara Ingram School, with the possibility that the Maryland Theater might be looking at also expanding their street front facade, that this would be the best place to begin this downtown revitalization plan.
I think you've articulated that very well. And we've got to start someplace. And with the things that are happening in this particular area now, this is a logical place to start. We don't have these things happening in other areas yet. But once we start making some progress in this area that you're describing, this particular block, hopefully. And I think we can expect things to start moving out to other areas as well. So I think that while that may not be an official policy, it certainly ought to be our initial vision.
Well, you know, when I came on the council, we were focusing on South Potomac. And I think that came off relatively well. The recession dampened it some. We got mocked for doing the sidewalks, but I think it turned out very well.
Actually, I think most of the mocking came from the glittery street machado.
There were others, but. In any event, I think that that came off reasonably well. And if we do decide, for whatever our reasons are, to invest in this garage, to me, it says we must focus on that area.
I think, Mayor, you've said it before, but just to restate it. The way you envision it and what's been discussed is if we can assemble the properties on West Washington, then there's an opportunity for the private sector to come forward to actually do the development on that part.
Absolutely.
You don't envision us as the developer of a new building or.
I do not see the city as being the developer. And in fact, just in our initial brainstorming sessions, we would think that if the city can offer this property, put it out to a bid and for a very, very reasonable price, that we would hopefully entice a lot of competition for the redevelopment of these properties. And that would be the goal, of course, is to increase the public-private partnership aspect of this.
And I think that could tie in with the parking deck as Councilman Bluebaker was discussing.
These particular properties would not have been my first choice.
Having said that, the last thing I want to do is get into a debate among this body of whether we should go here or there. I think it's been well thought out and I would absolutely support it totally. And I think, as I've said before, somewhere along the line, we all missed the boat when we talked about having a plan because we've all had a plan. Everybody here had a plan when they ran for election. Issue is implementing the plan. The plan exists. The implementation of it is now. I know SOAR is one of, we're going to be discussing SOAR soon, but I can't imagine it fits in any better than what you're saying. Is this is sort of, in my opinion, the test kit to see if it works. Here, we decide on the area. I'm assuming we're going to acquire the property. They say, here is the project. So, and the project is the Board of Education, as I understand it.
And I don't see it so much as a test case. And I've said this over and over, but I want to address two issues first that Marty brought up. And that is parking and, you know, being behind on deciding on the Board of Ed. And I pointed to two pieces of information that I brought this morning. And the first is a letter from the Chamber of Commerce, which I got in 2009, the Southwest Quadrant Parking Deck. That based on their analysis and the Hagerstown Planning Department's analysis, there was a demand, a potential demand through that assessment of 2,290 spaces with a current supply of 311. So, you know, there was an analysis by two groups at that time as it applies to this continued idea. And I think that speaks to the parking issue. And I use Frederick City often as the example. And there are a number of other successful towns that build parking and move on and build more parking as part of their infrastructure investment in redevelopment of the hundreds of thousands of square feet of space in their urban cores. The second is a letter from the city, December 2011, which was correspondence between the city and Greater Hagerstown in this Board of Education, you know, analysis for downtown, which basically said, our goal is to complete our work late spring for a final presentation to the Board of Education in June or July of 2012. We didn't make that presentation until just this past month. So, you know, there was definitely, you know, some delay in that process. And therefore, I don't feel, as a new member to this council, that I've been put behind, you know, in that process because that process clearly was indicated would be concluded at least eight months prior to this time. That being said, and speaking more pointedly to Lou's comment about the test case, you know, you look at the university. We basically took that block and made improvements. And by identifying that sort of catalyst, have improved that block incrementally since that inception. Bulls and Bears serves as an example. Bispa serves as an example. The library serves as an example. You know, our existence on this corner serves as an example. And clearly, as a county commissioner, is when we purchased the PNC and put the Transit Center, that served as an example to that block. So, you know, when I sat down with the map, if you will, and I go back to this issue that I've said from day one, which is identifying in downtown a couple of things. The first is our infrastructure-related responsibilities to make it thrive. And the second is identifying clearly the assets and the liabilities that exist within our urban core. And oftentimes, we get caught up in the historic versus nonhistoric and occupied, you know, versus nonoccupied, rather than assets and liabilities. And I said that when we recently bought, you know, the Holiday Motel. We identified it as a liability to the long-term sustainability of downtown, in that part of downtown. And we're moving forward with correcting that issue. No different than we did with the Double T or we did with the Baldwin House, you know, and a number of these other properties.
Test case only in the aspect of the public partnership. That's the only aspect of the test case that I was.
Well, I think we did pretty well, you know, with Bowman on that issue.
We did.
So.
I agree with you there.
That gets me to this issue. And I know we're going to talk about SOAR here in a moment. I've been trying to sort of wrap my brain around how that would work. And I sat down and brainstormed with Bruce and the mayor on this issue and Marty a little bit. And if you just sort of took downtown, and I know we've done a ton of plans and a ton of identifications of areas, and you bounded Church Street with Prospect and Baltimore and I believe it's Cleveland, you've got the very basic square of space, if you will. It's about a 12-block area that existed. And I guess I would envision, in terms of a larger plan, is that you define this area and you take an assessment of that area and the assets and the liabilities that exist within each of those blocks in your downtown. And I think, you know, you look at the West Washington Street block and you clearly have a vision for how that block's going to develop. But that's because you've identified opportunity within that block and liabilities that keep that opportunity from happening. And I think you could do that with that sort of 12-block square area downtown. And it would provide a framework for private investment to understand within those blocks what you've identified and what opportunities exist and how you're going to assist in removing those liabilities within that area to ensure that that private investment occurs. So any type of master redeveloper or master redevelopment plan, I think, would have to take into account that specific area, that type of analysis, conduct that type of analysis and then move forward with plans within each of those respective areas that, you know, bring back, you know, and redevelop and revitalize that segment. Because, you know, when you look at that larger map, it's very clear that that is the bounded area that everybody sees and talks about and thinks about and does in a very piecemeal fashion. It sounds to me like what you're saying is that we should define this area. A lot of the, and I guess this is, I guess we're moving now into our downtown plan discussion and the consideration of the SOAR proposal. And everybody has gotten a copy of that. I guess the, from all of my individual conversations with council members and staff is that the cost of what is being proposed by SOAR is pretty steep, to be quite frank. And a lot of what their, the planning efforts, at least initially, we have the ability to do at the staff level and as a city. And so I would think that what we can do is have the staff put together an RFP for these, the services that they cannot do. Bring that back to us, I think, within 30 days. And we can discuss now what we'd like to see in that kind of RFP. But have them bring this back and say, look, this is what we are able to do in terms of, you know, we know we need to get all the stakeholder feedback. If we're doing a block-by-block approach, we need to be able to identify who the stakeholders are in each area, make sure they're brought to the table. Other planning efforts, we have data out the wazoo. I don't think we need a third party to analyze or collect more data. I've already spoken with our planning director and I've seen the data. We know where the vacant and underutilized buildings are. We know where the blight exists. We know where the irresponsible property owners are. We know where the opportunities are, like the council member Alshar is saying. So I think what we need to really figure out is, and I think we have to have our staff do this, is formulate an RFP. What do we need in terms of outside services that the staff cannot perform? Or that would, it would just be better to have a third party perform. And I think we need to come up with a reasonable budget in terms of affordability. I think, you know, I'm thinking somewhere along the lines of $100,000 to $200,000 would be what we would want to spend and probably not much more than that. I'm willing to listen to the thoughts of my fellow council members to find out what you guys think about the SOAR proposal, about this idea of an RFP and getting outside consultants. Again, we have data. What kinds of services our staff can perform on its own and what kinds of other services we need to bring in.
Mayor, before you do that, can I clarify our proposal?
Please.
Which might help them make some comments.
Sure.
First of all, let me clarify a few big picture items. This is not the SOAR team. Bruce Poole and I put this group together. After talking with some people locally from old friends, Bruce has a passion for this city and wanted to help. We got brought together by Mark Wasserman. We both worked for the University of Maryland. Bruce is on the board there and I'm one of their engineers and did the new hospital in Easton. Bruce said, Dame, what can we do to help the city? And I shared with him this public-private partnership. And both of us have a relationship with the Lieutenant Governor. The Lieutenant Governor, as you all know now, is heading up the state task force on public-private partnerships and is strongly promoting them. Our vision, I don't think, is coming across to the town, so I'm going to try to explain it.
Thank you.
Our vision is you sign an agreement with us at no cost and we become your agents. We go get the money. We're not asking for City of Hagerstown money to do this. We believe we can get money, planning money from the state, and we can get the participation of the county. And we can form a city-county-state partnership that could be a model statewide that the Lieutenant Governor could support for a public-private partnership and what they can do and the value that can come out of them. We don't want to get paid for that. That's our public involvement. We also want to be the agent for you. And we would do this through a letter. We think we can talk to the Board of Education and combine a Board of Education proposal with some other downtown projects that we're willing to fund. You have capital funding problems. We have capital funds. We would do the Board of Education. We would do the garage. We would do the Maryland Theater. We've met with the Maryland Theater. We've met with the County Economic Development Commission. Businesspeople who were opposed to us coming in as a third-party out-of-town quote experts are now coming to us and saying they would like to be part of our team.
Can I ask, can I stop you there and ask you a question?
Yeah.
What keeps you from doing all of those things without an agreement with the city?
It doesn't work without an agreement for the city, as I've been explaining. You can't just do a patch. You know, with Mr. Alshar, we've had some discussions after some of these meetings. What I've seen that's failed in other locations, Bainbridge is a perfect example. They had slight problems, unforeseen, but they had other problems. You can't get five developers coming in and each having a special interest and doing something that you think works for the city and then ending up with a patchwork quilt at the end that has no interconnectivity, no theming that brings other people behind them and then behind them and then behind them. You absolutely need, whether we do the work or not, I'm going to tell, I'll advise you free. You need a master plan. And you need to agree with it. The private investors need to agree with it. The county needs to agree with it. And the state needs to agree with it. To pull this off, you need all of them. You know, you're going to get to a big project one day. I don't know if it's going to be a downtown sports arena, if it's going to be a convention center, if it's going to be a combination or a multipurpose center or a stadium. And you're going to want $10 or $15 million from the state. They don't want to build you a stadium. They want to participate in some element of your downtown redevelopment that is a stimulus for everything else that's going to come. And to do that, you need a master plan. And to do that, you need a master plan. I know you have very capable people. You know, I've known Bruce for years. I know what your engineering people can do. This isn't about that. If we go to bring outside people to come in here, we've got to give them a plan that's at our liability and our risk. We've done the assessments. We've, you know, we've done the marketing studies. We've studied the infrastructure. We're putting our name on the line because we're bringing their money and their business in here. Anybody would require that. Bruce can give me the stuff, but we're still going to have to vet it ourselves. We're still going to have to go and assess it. We're going to have to look at the sewer capacity and see whether we agree with you or we don't agree with you, or the age of those lines running in the street. Is there a problem? Maybe you've got the capacity, maybe we don't agree that the infrastructure is safe and adequate over a 20-, 25-year lending period or investing period. We're going to have to do those things. Okay. If you sign some agreement that costs you no money for us to meet with people and bring this deal together, get these business people to sign up with us locally, get the Board of Education to come onboard, make a deal, and they're waiting for our proposal at the Maryland Theater. We had a wonderful meeting with them that was set up by Ron Bauer, and they said, "Give us the plan." What is it? We know what we want to do. We've got partners, they have partners. They don't have the ability to implement it. They want us to provide, what is the blueprint? And how does it fit in with what's going to happen, cross the street, down the block, around the corner, and how do we fit in? And I do believe that they're a centerpiece to anything that you do down here. We spent six hours over there the other day, and the potential there is unbelievable, and how it can tie in with everything else. The money, our proposal, you see the proposal as outlay from the city. We do not. We're willing to go get three quarters.
Talking about the matrix that was attached to the letter.
Yeah. We're willing to get three-quarters of that money ourself. We'll go to the state, we'll go to the county. We'll put that deal together, or we won't do the plan. If we can't put the money together for you, that's not going to be the plan.
And I'm not trying to, I guess I am dense, but I guess the, my question is, I still haven't really heard why this, why you need an exclusive arrangement with the city in order to make this happen.
Well, I think I just explained it. You have to, a public-private partnership. Well, first of all, if we're not speaking for the city in Annapolis, forget it.
Who are you speaking for, then?
I'm not speaking for myself. I'm doing this for you. I've been here for a year, Mayor.
Sure.
At my own cost. I bet you our company spent $100,000 up here this year at my own cost. It's not just a business venture. Bruce wanted us up here, so we're here.
And I, and trust me, I appreciate all of the energy and enthusiasm that, that your interest in Hagerstown has generated.
It's not lost, though. It's coming together.
Absolutely.
Believe me.
And I, and I think that the, what I sense on the council is that we don't want to sacrifice due diligence for expedience, and so, and again, maybe I'm just dense, so I'm having a hard time.
I'm almost finished. I'm almost finished. If we can do in a month what we think we can do, get these business partners, get the state in before the legislative session's over, take that to the county and show them why they should be wanting to do this. And if we can get Meredith Health, who we're meeting with almost every week, to do a senior center wellness clinic downtown, which they want to do, okay? If we can locate it where you all want it located, if we can tie it in with a garage, because they need a garage, okay? If we can tie it in with the Board of Education, you don't have to spend any of that money. We'll do your downtown plan for you if we know that we've got four projects in your targeted area, and we're going to capitalize it. Because the way that we recover all of our planning money is when we capitalize the project and get the private investor money, because we, it's all eligible money. You know, anybody who's going to invest in our projects is willing to pay the soft cost, and they'd be proportioned. So, each project, if it's a $10 million project, maybe they absorb, you know, $80,000 of the soft cost. If we did the stadium right now, I can tell you, if you were ready to do the stadium and you were, and what you wanted to do under the previous administration was a lease agreement, that's all we need. If we had a lease agreement with a purchase rider for you on the stadium, we can build you your stadium. If we were building the stadium and the Board of Education and helping the Maryland Theater and doing the garage, you don't need, we don't need any money from you. We need not a penny. We want the chance. Give us 45 days to bring this plan together and see if you don't want to vote on it at that time.
Well, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. These are the voting members of this body.
Yeah, I, I have some pretty strong feelings about this. I, the two of us watched this city and its staff spend hours, probably thousands of man-hours, literally thousands of man-hours, trying to put together the multi-use stadium. Upstairs in engineering is littered with renderings and drawings. Staff took airplane rides, everything. It failed, for whatever reasons. Now is not the time for an autopsy, but I can't tell you the thousands of hours that were put in. Was it three weeks ago that we met with the board? 21 days ago? 21 days ago, we met with the board.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, 14 days ago, we met with the board, who said, "Give us an answer in 70 days." 14 days later, we discussed tonight that we agree on a location, and then essentially move on. What are we doing with the board? What is it that we're doing to get them here? And my point being is, we have an organization, for the first time comes in with the bona fides, who says, "Let me do this. Give me a month to do it." I mean, I got done our meeting with the county commissioners, and it was a typical meeting with the county commissioners. We all sat here and looked at each other, and it was a nice two-hour meeting, and everybody went their ways, and we accomplished probably absolutely nothing. We met with the Board of Education. We all thought that we were doing real well until we got back and found out that they decided they weren't even going to let us know that they were taking, knew they were going to take an option on Allegheny Energy and didn't even want to share that with us. And we are a group of five elected officials, the mayor and staff, and we're getting a proposal from an organization who has the bona fides, has the credentials, who has been here. When you say expediency, I mean, I think our first meeting was in May.
Well, then it was a big push to do the stadium, and we were.
But it was more than the stadium.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about a lot more than the stadium in May. We talked about a major downtown improvement involving multiple buildings and other things. What is our plan right now to get the Board of Education downtown, other than a very nice video? And I don't mean to be sarcastic when I say that. It was very nice. Our presentation to the board was very nice. We had three board members there today from the Board of Education, right? I just think to pass up, to look at Sora and say, "Well, I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to put out an RFP, and in maybe 60 days, 30 to 60 days, we'll go through the RFPs and we'll figure out which ones we want." And my question is, to do what? Because by that time, the Board of Education is gone. And one of the things that we've all heard, second-hand, third-hand, fourth-hand, maybe some of you have heard them firsthand, I think Paul Bailey was the one who was most honest with us, and I don't mean about the stadium. I mean, what we've all heard is this little, if you think, well, we heard it, I guess, explicitly. If you think, "We're going to be the solution to downtown, we're going to Allegheny Energy. You better bring us something other than you just want us downtown." I think we have made a very good presentation that we have a plan and they're a part of it, but there is not one of us who's about to go out there with the ability to say, "Listen, we also, not only do we represent the City of Hagerstown in putting together this plan, but already we have a board meritus, and this is their aspect of what they're going to do with it." And I see where this is going. And meanwhile, we're out here floundering, trying to figure out what to do other than to get up and make nice public statements of, "We'll do it so it doesn't cost you any money," but we're not going to the board and telling them how we're doing it.
Well, to be honest, we did say that we would acquire property, we would prepare it for the site, and regardless of whether the Board of Ed chooses to go in that location, it would still be an opportunity for economic development.
And Mayor, to give deference to my colleague across from me, none of us had ever talked about how we're going to pay for it. What we do talk about is we're not going to raise taxes, and we talk at this table constantly about all the good things we're going to do, whether it's helping the Maryland Theater, or whether it's acquiring this property and make it pad-ready. You know, I like to throw it out because we have a deadline to be able to make these presentations, but people are going to wonder how we're doing it. Where we're getting the money, how we're doing this project. And I believe, in my mind, that if the Board of Education, if the decision by the board is made with the only major players trying to attract them being the City of Hagerstown, I think we're going to lose them. I think we need this type of presentation, and I don't think it's an expedient presentation. I think when you hear what was just said, which I believe to be very true, hundreds of man-hours already spent on the project, that we're being asked to give them one month to be our agent and come back to the table and say, "This is what we've accomplished." That's, Tristan, what I was talking about, about the test case. That's what I saw. I hadn't heard the one month, but I was looking at the Board of Education.
Well, the session's over April. I mean, whatever we're going to do, whatever deal we're going to put together for the city, has to be within the timeframe that the session is still in. And by the way, everybody needs to come to the reception, this Sunday at 4:00.
I'll be there.
You need to be there.
Came a fine art.
Because we've gone through a lot of effort to get the lieutenant governor up here, and he's prepared to speak to all of you about public-private partnerships and what he thinks that we can do with them for you.
Right. That's already set up.
Dana, if I could clarify, what we've got in the Maryland Council's packet today for the meeting is a letter dated February 20th from Bruce, Bruce Poole. Did that, is that a Sora proposal, or is that a proposal from you and Bruce?
Was that a cover letter?
It's a letter from Bruce Poole that outlines and says that, "Based on the Sora's team extensive public-private partnership experience, we estimate that this initial phase will require an upfront investment of $786,500 for third-party professional services over a 12-month period. Hopefully, the city would share this expense with the county and state in some fashion." Is that what you're proposing tonight?
No. We're saying if we get this.
That's what we got on February 20th from Bruce Poole.
I know, but we haven't been part, what we asked for originally that's been forgotten is that you give us a letter that said that you wouldn't.
You're saying this isn't relevant any longer? Because we just got it two weeks ago.
I'm trying to answer, Bruce.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to clarify, because this is what we were given as a proposal.
What we asked for as part one of this, I'm just going back so that you refresh your memory, was a letter from the city that said you would enter into a public-private partnership negotiating period with us, where we would put down in the agreement what we would do for you, and we would negotiate it out. During some of those discussions, somebody said, "What kind of an effort is it going to take if we're going to do this right, and if we're going to bring all these different entities downtown?" That's an answer to a question. That's not a proposal. Actually, Don told me, "What's it going to take to do this thing that you keep talking about?" That's the level of effort. How it gets funded is up to an agreement. Do you give it to us? Do we bring part of the money to the table? You know, Sora's already said they're going to donate their time. Maybe SCANS will say they're going to donate their time. You know, we have to outsource marketing studies and a lot of other things. If we know in the next month or 45 days that we have three buildings to build, that number's going to go down to some $200,000 number that you're talking about.
So, this wasn't prepared in response to the meeting the mayor and I had with Rob Hobson and Tom Four from Sora?
No. This was prepared to give you a level of effort that would be required for the first year. We were still looking for a letter agreement with the city that would say, "Before we're going to lock into you on any number, do you have the state money? Do you have the county money? Do you have projects that you're bringing to the table?" Because all that gets worked into an agreement. We've been asking for an agreement from day one. This is a judgment on our part to do it right of what the level of effort is. Who pays for it and how it gets paid is all part of some agreement that we get done. We never asked you to put this on the agenda.
To cut to the chase, at the beginning of this session, you rattled off a series of things. You said within either, I think you said 30 days once and 45 days another time, whatever that is.
Whatever the end of the session is.
Whatever it is.
I think it's five weeks.
Yeah. Sounds about right. You would be prepared to do a number of things at no obligation to the city to see what you brought back, and that would be your reward if we could, if you could bring things back, being the city's agent.
Maybe you would feel that it was worth it.
Return on that capital would be worth it. So, what you're saying is, we're not agreeing to a million, which is where we started, $750,000, which is where we thought. Now, okay, this is new news, so I must say, I've asked questions about where the investment money would, a lot of questions, and I still don't, perhaps like the mayor, I'm too dense, but I still don't quite understand where the investment would come from. I understand in your other communities, I looked at that. I'm not quite sure how that would arrive here, but if, you know, I guess we're being offered something here that I hadn't heard before, so it's mighty hard to turn down.
What we're looking for is a one-page letter that says, "We're authorizing you to function as our agent to do these three or four things that I mentioned. To build your team and see if you can add local businesses to it. To meet with the Board of Education, see if you can combine that project with some other things downtown to get their commitment to locate downtown. To meet with the lieutenant governor and his representatives and see if we can get funding to do a good part of this effort."
Why would we say no?
That's all we need. And then you'll know. You'll know by the end of the session whether we're the great guys you want to deal with or not.
Why would we say no? There's no reason to say no.
Does the letter commit the city to Sora or someone being the developer? Just to clarify that, Dane, because that's been a question.
All it does is qualify us to then start a negotiated process with you to do the work if you want us or if you don't.
So, it doesn't preclude us from talking to local developers?
We're, what we're telling you is.
It prequalifies you, but does it prohibit the city from talking to local developers?
I don't know how to answer that. What we're trying to do is add them to our team.
My understanding, that's what you're trying to do, is bring them in, yes.
In the next five weeks, we're going to add them to our team.
That's part of the.
So, they would only come to us under Sora?
If they want to.
But if they don't want to?
Well, then they won't.
Would they be, would they still have an opportunity to do public-private partnership with the city?
Yes. I think in one of the letters we sent, Sora can't do all this, but they can do great master plans, and you've heard the presentations that Tim Elliott's done. He's a wizard. This guy turns cities backwards and puts them back to where they wanted to be 50 years ago. He's the, he's the real thing. And we can take his thoughts and put them on paper. We can cost it out, and we can test it, and we can tell you whether it works on the ground. That's the way we work. I mean, if we can bring the Board of Ed in, if we can bring Meredith Health down and do a building, and if we can do a garage, the amount of money that the city would have to invest would be a fraction of that. And if you were to say, "We want you to do the stadium and we'll lease it, you go ahead and use all your capital funds to build the stadium," you wouldn't have to pay a penny for us to do anything. It would all be in our investment. As a matter of fact, I think I had talked to Don offline about when the Ripken study comes in, and if that's what you want, and if you tell us that's what you want, and if you just want a lease agreement and you want to use our capital, we'll build the stadium.
We discussed that.
We'll build the stadium.
Couldn't figure out how else to pay for it, so I talked to you.
Well, you would use, you would use general funds. You wouldn't have to use any capital funds to do it. And then you could use your capital funds for some of the other things that you were talking about before I came up there. That's our proposal. That is a work plan that if you had to do it and we all had to roll up our sleeves together, and if you want to know the measure of the resources that you'd have to do to put a plan together that we could show to anybody and get them to want to come here, that's the level of effort we'd take. We'll come up with the money if we can identify projects upfront and put this team together and get the resources from the state and everything else that's necessary.
I guess I'd like to see.
So, we just want the opportunity.
I guess I'd like to see the one-page or, I'd even be willing to take the letter on both sides of the same page.
I think Bruce and I could draft it together.
I would ask that you draft it, Dane, because it's entirely different than what we got as this proposal, which was a proposal.
It'd only take me 20 minutes tomorrow to draft a letter. It'll only take me 20 minutes tomorrow to draft the letter.
I would suggest to get it done and get distributed, and so we can get this moving.
Our time is running out. How quickly could you approve it if you read it and you like it? Do we have to wait another week, because we'd lose another?
Maran Council meet on a weekly basis.
But can you... Is this something you could do, a poll over the phone?
No. It's too important, I think, to just do it over the phone.
Could you have a special meeting so we don't lose the week?
If the Maran Council feel that's...
Well, this has been my attitude from the day we met with the Board of Education and found out we had 73 days to do something, and it's two weeks now, and we're talking. I thought we should have had a special meeting two weeks ago. I don't have a problem with it at all.
I think, Dane, we just need to give the Maran Council an opportunity to make sure they understand what they're doing in their relationship with you.
And I don't think it just... I don't think it is limited to what the Maran Council are doing. You know, we need to have the ability, through a process as nebulous as it appears is being suggested here, to clearly convey to our staff what their role is in their correspondence and activity with the Board of Ed. So I'm just trying to figure out, in a process such as this, the role that the then... Not the Maran Council, but more so the city staff play in terms of who has that communication with the Board of Ed as it relates to this project.
What we're asking for is to meet with them independently.
And I hear that suggestion, and I don't...
They've asked to meet with us.
I don't think there's anybody at this table that has the ability to preclude you from doing so, but there clearly is going to have to be some understanding from this body to our staff in relationship with this entity in terms of what steps, proposal, package is put together that can be offered. I can't envision that you would go to the Board of Ed on our behalf and offer some package...
We're offering them our money.
On our behalf.
Yeah, that's... I mean, my understanding of this is that the city's proposal is we've identified...
The property.
The location.
Right.
We have said that we will purchase it and make it pad-ready. Now, the question is, that does not seem to be enough, from what I've seen, to get the Board of Education down here.
We've also said we will invest in the... Some reasonable degree of infrastructure improvements.
Right. But let me just say by way of example, we were told it was going to cost $16 million to build a new building downtown. The word I'm hearing is that it's going to cost them $5 million to buy Allegheny.
Five and a half, yeah.
And two to three renovate, that's $8 million. That means if it costs $16 million, under your theory that you said today, which I appreciate it, we've got to come up with $6 million for them to come downtown. Now, one way to do it is for us to say, "We're coming up with the cost of all that plus $6 million." The other way is to go, "I don't hear them saying they're going to the Board of Education or anybody, nor are we giving them authority," which can be made clear in a letter, "that they have no authority to spend our money or to commit to spending our money. We give the commitment to make it pad-ready. They know that, and then it's their job to go to the Board of Education and say, 'This is how it's going to get done.'" I'm assuming from everything I hear, the object is a lease buyback ultimately.
They want to hear two things from us, how we would help them implement it to their cost-effective benefit, and two, what other things are we talking about in our package to build downtown that makes them feel good about that move? Those are the two things they want to hear from us.
And I have to say this, for good, bad, or indifferent, when I look at the members of the Board of Education and some other players, rightfully or wrongfully, we talk about perception. I believe the perception is, and we sort of heard it when we got queried about the Barbara Ingram and the parking deck. I don't think the Board has a lot of faith in this city government. I think they have a lot more faith in him, to be honest with you, and people may not like to hear that, but that's...
No, it's true.
It's a distinct impression I get.
And that's why, even though they've gone to people, there's now people wanting them to come to them to talk.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the Board has never come to us and said, "We'd really like you to tell us things," but they're coming to these people and saying, "Yeah, we'd like to hear what your proposals are."
The Maryland Theater came to us.
Everybody's coming to them, and we need to tell them go.
They want to condominiumize that, just so that you know what they're doing. They have four different parties, and they know what they want, and they know what they want in the new building, and they know what they want on each floor. They have no money to do it.
Are you talking about the Maryland Theater?
Maryland Theater, okay.
But the bottom line of any plan is, you've got to come back here and get our approval, right? So you're going to do it...
Now, all we're asking for, can we set the table and enhance our proposal to you?
Right, so...
Get some state money potentially, get some other people to buy into our team, maybe sway the Board of Education to be part of that, okay? Maybe get Meredith Health to say they'll be part of it, okay? And bring it back to you, and if it looks like something you want to do, that you would negotiate an agreement with us to do those things that we're bringing to you, which, by the way, we could do on our own, anyway.
I think we have three.
So, yeah, I think it's time for us to move. We've got very short time here.
Well, here's my...
Lou has articulated this thing incredibly well. It's time. We're not going to have this opportunity for long, and I really think we need to make it happen. We need you to draft the letter. We need Bruce to review the draft, and we need to meet, even if it's a special session, and do it.
Do you need a letter, or do you need a public statement from the Maran Council?
I need a letter. When I talk to the Lieutenant Governor, he needs to know that I'm representing the mayor and you guys. Can be one page. Believe me, I'm going to make it the simplest thing you ever saw.
Well, that letter needs to come to us.
Obviously.
What I was going to say about this whole thing, there's two things from Missouri that I'm going to say. In the end, the buck does stop here. That's Truman. The other thing is, show me. And you've laid out a completely different process from anything I've heard before, and I've heard you guys many times. So it's, "Show me."
That's what we're asking.
But at the same time, if you guys are willing to work this hard at it and do it, I appreciate it and all that. I don't like the idea that people, not you, that others in this community, saying they don't want to deal with the city. If that's the case, that it is wrong. We are undertaking a lot of things. I have confidence in getting good recommendations from the staff, even when I don't agree with them, I think they're doing good work, and I really resent...
It's not the staff.
Well, I know it's not the staff, but I just want to say that publicly, that I've heard this since I arrived, and I said this morning, I've been here for eighteen... I started hearing stuff about that city almost the first two weeks I came to this area. And I didn't find it to be accurate. Although there were parts of it that might have been accurate, but, you know, we've worked on and fixed a lot of those things over the years. So at the same time, you have presented us an amazing proposal, sir. So more power to you.
I'll get the letter to Bruce early tomorrow.
And you can use both sides of the page, you know, it'd be all right.
I understand.
You are either opposing what is the real deal or an illusion, and frankly, at the end of the day, what we stand to lose by that is potentially the Board of Education. That's...
And I think the exact opposite. I think the exact opposite. I think by not doing this is almost a game.
I'm not saying we're not. I'm not saying we're opposed. I'm just saying that those are the parameters.
So let's get it done.
Is everyone available at 4 o'clock on Thursday?
Well, tomorrow, I suspect there's nothing to do, but tomorrow, I would recommend we look at Friday.
Friday, 4 o'clock?
Bruce, but if I get it to you, you'll circulate it, so that when they meet, they've already got their thoughts together.
I'll circulate it to the attorney, and I'll circulate it to the Maran Council.
You can send it to us email.
Oh, and somebody can read it over the phone to me.
I'll call you.
I won't be coming down in a snowstorm. Sorry, guys.
I'll drive it to your house, Penny.
We'll meet at Penny's house.
I'll pick you up, Penny.
Wrong.
So is that what you're saying, you'll have a special meeting then on Friday at 4:00?
I can do it Thursday or Friday, this week.
What is it, Friday?
Well, Thursday in the morning, you'll be still digging out, right? From what I understand, now they're calling 15 to 18 inches up here.
Do you have any time on Friday?
I can try to be here by 4:00 on Friday. I have a doctor's appointment in Baltimore at 1:00.
So let's make it 4:30.
Or do you want to make it at 11:00?
Yeah. That's okay with me, too. I'll be here anytime Friday.
Would you all rather do it early than a late afternoon on a Friday?
I have the Constitution competition at Technical High School.
What time? All day?
No, I think it's the first half of the day, I think.
Afternoon's going to be better, Lou.
How about first thing in the morning? 7:30, 8 o'clock.
It's okay.
I can do it. That would be good for me. Friday afternoon, driving back from Baltimore, just is...
Yep.
7:30 on Friday would be good for me.
7:30 Friday morning?
Yep.
Sounds like a plan.
It's a plan.
Boy.
Which will be the first time in the last...
Well, somebody's got the key to the front door.
I'm hoping.
I need Bill Burkner here to tell us when the last time this was done.
Well, again, I really do appreciate all of the energy and enthusiasm, and I apologize for my density in trying to wrap my head around this proposal. I think everybody is intrigued, and, you know, I guess the major thing I think all of us are interested in is protecting the city, obviously, and our taxpayers, and being good stewards of our resources. But I do think there is an element of what you're saying that is too good to be true. I don't know if I... Maybe something along the lines of what Mr. Alshar is saying, whether it's either the best thing since sliced bread, or it's David Copperfield magic.
Wasserman used to say of the Schaefer group, "I was the most optimistic of them all." But if you've got a good plan, and if it really is a team effort, people want to join in with you.
Well, I'm just equating this, in my limited knowledge, to you acting as like our real estate agent, and it's sort of like, you don't get any commission unless you make some kind of sale, and then that... And in this case, it would mean having some kind of project.
I don't think that's how Don sees it. When I worked for Schaefer, I was one of five people that the street folks were referred to if they had a problem with the administration. And what I was to do was listen to people in groups like this and say, "I know what you want." And the governors say, "If you know what they want, go do it, Dane." That's what I did. And we did many, many things together, Don and I. If we can't do it, you've lost absolutely nothing. I can tell you, we will not harm your relationship with the Board of Ed. We'll give them 10,000 reasons why they should do this.
Right. Well, and I won't get into why I think that they're misguided in their belief that they would be somehow an urban pioneer if they were to relocate their central offices to downtown, because...
Central already, 2,000, 3,000.
There's 3,293 people that already are employed in downtown, and I think that...
By the way, the garage, the way that works, and I heard Mr. Alshar talk about this early, you can get commitment... We've talked to enough business people here in the year we've been here, that there's a lot of people that want spaces in a garage. You have to go door to door, and you've got to get those commitments, and you can get enough of those commitments to pay a good part of your lease purchase agreement, believe me.
So that it would not be on spec, like Mr. Burbaker is saying?
No. You'd go to University of Maryland, you'd go to everybody, and you say, "How many spaces do you need? You've got them. During the day, these are your spaces, and here's where they are, or here's how that you get them." During at night, it operates a whole different way. It's a whole different way at night. And by the way, SORO, who we brought to the table, we could have brought anybody. We worked with Cordish Manning, we worked with everybody. We brought them to the table because they happen to specialize in this. This is all they do. They do urban revitalization.
Because you said if we have a letter of agreement with us, who is "us"?
Bruce and I put this team together, so it's our team.
So it's... The letter of agreement will be with you and Bruce Poole?
Yes.
To act as the agent for the city to pursue these opportunities that are out there?
And there's members of our team, SORO's on the team, SCANS, but this isn't a SCANS thing.
But the agreement is with Dane and Bruce, and I'll say this, we never got more help from the feds in our life than we did when we went down and had federal lobbyists, and I almost look at these folks as very, very similar to lobbyists on top of other things.
Well, Bruce still has very strong ties down in apples. Very strong.
And I appreciate that.
I may have them with the state agencies, but he has them with the political people. Well, I hope that we deliver.
Thank you.
I think we will.
I appreciate you.
If we don't, we'll leave you with what we got, and I think you'll be better off for it no matter what.
And again, I appreciate you being here and taking our questions and...
That's why I came by myself.
Dealing with our density.
You needed to know why Bruce and I did this.
One of the governors here on Sunday, if you can take him aside...
The Lieutenant Governor.
Down to the project.
You can do anything you want. He's expecting...
No, I'm talking about you.
Oh, we're here.
Talking to him.
Melissa and I... Melissa, come up here a minute. They don't know Melissa.
We know Melissa.
She's the one doing a lot of this behind the scenes. You know, maybe Bruce and I that are coming up with the idea and the targets and what we have to do, but it's Melissa that's doing a lot of the legwork and making this happen. You know, you're going to see a lot more Melissa up here if all this comes together right.
We want the governor, Lieutenant Governor, who may be the governor next time, to have a gut feeling of what this is all about.
By the way, you can't write many checks until after the session.
Probably.
He's got us fundraising for him, and you can't... I didn't know this. All the years, Bruce, that I worked for the different governors, I did not know that you can't make a political contribution to somebody who is running for state office during the General Assembly.
No, you cannot do that.
I just found that out.
Makes perfect sense to me.
It does.
Any other questions?
And it's transparent.
Any other questions or comments regarding the downtown plan?
I'll get the letter to you straight away.
Thank you. And then we'll plan on 7:30 on Friday, is when we'll meet next, and hopefully, we'll have another snow day.
That's PM, right?
At this point, we'll take a break for five minutes.
Morning, morning.
And we're back. The next item on our agenda is the FY13 employee compensation. Turn it over to the city administrator and finance director.
If I could, let me just offer some introductory comments. This is a follow-up to the budget retreat we had on January 29th, and actually goes back even a year ago when we did the retreat and were talking about budget projections for the coming fiscal year. And as you know, in what we looked at in January, we had an initial gap in the general fund of just over $1 million. We talked at the staff level about the recent history of expenditure containment that we've had in the city that's primarily impacted the employees. We've gone four years without a cost-of-living adjustment, three years without a step increase, and I said a year ago, I said it again in January, I think that's long enough to ask employees to go without either a COLA or a STEP. I feel strongly we need to do something for the employees here in the coming months and into the next fiscal year. Having said that, we can also say as an employer that we've done good things for our employees. We, our employees have good compensation and solid positions. They have a good benefits program, and they have a good retirement program. And that's not something every employer can say in terms of what they provide for their employees. As we've talked before, and, and this is all part of this tough balancing act, we've got a, a community with a fairly high level of, of low-income residents with limitations on how much they can afford in terms of the cost of the city government. But I think we've got to look at this in terms of the sustainability of our operations, and to do that, I think we have to look at how we compensate our employees. And so, after the budget retreat, and, and what we took from your comments in the budget retreat was that you weren't, weren't comfortable with covering that million-dollar gap with a tax rate increase, but you also wanted to, uh, see if there wasn't something we could do for our employees. That was the general message that we took from the Mayor and Council discussion in, in January on the budget retreat. And so, we're here this afternoon or evening to offer you a couple, uh, approaches to consider. And the one we'd like to work on first is the current year and discuss an approach we took two years ago, which was using reserves and retained earnings in our enterprise funds. Reserves in the general fund offer a payment, a flat payment to our employees of a thousand dollars in the current year. It doesn't go on their base pay. It wouldn't carry over as part of base salaries for the coming year, but it's a recognition of the employees that, that we're trying to do something for them. I think in the, in the bigger picture of things, it doesn't go as far as we would like. It certainly doesn't go as far as our four unions would like, but it's, it's a start in terms of trying to get our employees some compensation. And so, that's the first item before you, and Michelle can walk you through the letter. And we've got, got a letter in your packet that gives you some more details. So if it's all right with the Mayor and Council, Michelle can take a few minutes to cover some of the details in that letter.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably be touching base on some things that Bruce has already mentioned. As he said, that we wanted to ask for your consideration for a payment of one thousand dollars to full-time regular employees and two hundred dollars to part-time regular employees to be paid during the first pay period in June of two thousand thirteen. That would be done during the fiscal year thirteen budget, and it's to help lessen some of the pressure that we're feeling for fiscal year fourteen as far as getting that balanced. As part of the background, we, we have made significant reductions in expenditures in recent years in response to the loss of state and county shared revenues, as well as the decrease in the assessable base that we experienced in the last triennial reassessment. We are also dealing with having unfunded positions within the city. Staff are expected to work with reduced staff levels and continue normal operations with thirty-nine unfunded vacant positions in the fiscal year thirteen budget. Also, in fiscal year eleven, employees did receive ten unpaid furlough days, which equated to about three-point-eight percent reduction in their annual pay. Other reductions employees have seen were in fiscal year twelve, we eliminated the, or we started the phase-down of the retirement payment for accumulated sick leave. And by July first of two thousand sixteen, the maximum payout will be capped at twelve thousand dollars. And on January first of two thousand eleven, the number of sick days that can be earned by full-time employees was reduced from fifteen to twelve per year. And as Bruce mentioned, we did approve a similar payment to this in fiscal year twelve. We only approved it for full-time employees at that time. The total cost for all funds was four hundred and forty-eight thousand. General fund expenditure was about three hundred and seven thousand dollars. What we're proposing, as we have attached a cost analysis for your consideration, proposing that employees who are active on June second, two thousand thirteen, who were hired prior to December first of two thousand twelve, so they would have about six months of employment here. We would also like to base it on their employment status as of December first. We occasionally have employees who move from part-time to full-time. We want to use their employment status as of December first. That the payment would be made on their first pay period in June, which would be paid on Friday, June seventh. The estimated cost for the general fund for full-time employees is about three hundred and one thousand, and for part-time employees is about seven thousand. The cost for all full-time employees in all funds is about four hundred and forty-two thousand, and then part-time employees would be about eight thousand four hundred dollars. As Bruce mentioned, funding sources that we have identified to pay for this one-time expenditure in fiscal year thirteen would be unreserved fund balance for all of the funds. City has very wisely strengthened its unreserved fund balance over the years. It's very important for us to do that, especially during these uncertain economic times. Our unfunded, or I'm sorry, unreserved fund balance has remained fairly flat over the last few fiscal years. At the end of fiscal year twelve, our general fund unreserved fund balance was seven-point-eight million dollars, and it's budgeted to increase to eight-point-two million in fiscal year thirteen. The unreserved fund balance as a percent of total expenditures was twenty-two percent in fiscal year twelve. It's budgeted to be twenty-three-point-three percent in fiscal year thirteen. That's over two point, it's over two and a half months of expenditures available as working capital by the end of fiscal year thirteen. And just to refresh you on what our policy is, the city is required, based on its current fund balance policy, to maintain a fund balance of ten percent of expenditures, or just over one month. GFOA best practices recommend that a better number for that should be two months of operating expenditures, or sixteen-point-six-seven percent. Additionally, when we did look at all of the enterprise funds, at the end of fiscal year twelve, there was sufficient unrestricted net assets available to cover the cost of this payment in all of the enterprise funds. We do recommend utilization of this unreserved fund balance for this one-time expenditure. We don't believe that it would adversely affect the general fund or any of the enterprise fund's short-term liquidity. And to ensure that we are protecting the city in the future, we'd like to come back to the Mayor and Council in the coming weeks, probably in the spring sometime, to revise the city's fund balance policy to make it more in line with what the GFOA best practices are. So, we did include the cost analysis on the last page to show what the breakout was by fund for full-time employees as well as regular, uh, part-time employees. And at this time, I'd like to open it to any questions from you.
Just to summarize, we, we think this is affordable, affordable for us. We're comfortable with offering that as a recommendation. Not as much as we'd like to be able to offer the employees, but we think it's a, it's a good start to trying to strengthen compensation.
Comments, questions? I'm finding the recommendation myself.
And I am, too.
Should we move on to the next item, agenda, agenda item? Does anyone else have any comments? It looks like you guys are still mulling.
Well, I really want to do this, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable making these financial decisions without knowing where we're getting down the road. I know we have enough in FY thirteen, but we'll, we'll still have enough if we make the decision when we see what the budget picture looks like, rather than, than make it now. It's, but...
We're, we're, we're offering this as an approach to maybe lessen some of the pressure on next year's budget for, for wages and compensation.
Right, right, right.
We would need to come back to Mayor and Council with a required motion to actually formally approve this during regular sessions, so...
Like I said, I'm, you know, I, I do think the employees deserve it. It's just, you know, we're... I think we should talk about the next topic anyhow, because it fits right in.
Okay.
Can I jump into that?
Sure.
If we could on this, just, uh, the, the next item is wages and benefits for, for next year. And what we talked about in the budget retreat was that in our projections for next year, we had included eight hundred thousand dollars as a contingency for a combination of COLAs, STEP increases, other related personnel costs. And that was a general fund number. And, and that was partly what led to the million-dollar gap that we presented on January twenty-ninth. It was part of those, those numbers. And so, we've tried to lessen that by coming up with these approaches. The other thing that we've done since, um, the budget retreat on January twenty-ninth, because we've had a lot of discussion internally from, from staff looking at, uh, the, the three years of going without a STEP increase, and next year being the fourth year of possibly no STEP increase. So we've costed out for the Mayor and Council the cost of restoring STEPS, not retroactively, but to say effective July one of two thousand thirteen, if we put all of our employees at the STEP that they would have been at, had we not frozen STEPS. So it's not a retroactive payment. It's saying at that point in time, what would it, what would it impact the budget, or what would be the cost to the next year's budget? We put everybody at the restored STEP level on July one, two thousand thirteen. So, Michelle, you want to just cover that number as well in your presentation of the memo?
Yeah, definitely. Before I get into the presentation, I'll, I'll go ahead and go over those numbers that Bruce just talked about. To put everyone at the STEP that they would have been at, had STEPS not been frozen, for the general fund, the cost would be about one-point-one million dollars. For all funds, the grand total would be about one-point-three million dollars. And of course, that would be the base salary, so if there would be any COLA or anything additional approved later on, that number would increase based on any COLA that we would implement.
And that was calculated by looking basically at each employee in terms of who's eligible for STEPS.
Right.
And, and would they have gotten a STEP three years ago, two years ago, and...
Right.
So it's a, it's a pretty detailed calculation.
Looked at their hire date, everything.
But the, the gist of it is, to, to bring everybody up to that level, July one, two thousand thirteen, would be roughly a one-point-three million cost for all funds. A little over a million, um, in just the general fund. Higher levels than what we discussed in our budget projection on January twenty-ninth.
So this would add to the budget deficit that we had discussed in the budget retreat by one-point-one million dollars.
The original budget deficit that you projected was with a consideration of a COLA?
Was, yes.
With the contingency of the eight hundred thousand.
Right. That was part of the one, approximately one million dollar deficit.
Right.
So, so what we're considering now is the, a separate, um, or perhaps additional deficit of one-point-three. And it, so basically, we're talking about if we...
This could either be...
The most expensive plan will be to restore STEPS and give employees a cost of living adjustment.
We're offering that as information because we thought maybe you were hearing some of what we were hearing, which was...
We need to know the parameters of what we're working with.
Yeah, what would be the cost of, of restoring all of our STEPS, is what we've heard from some employees.
This could be either or, or it could be both.
Right.
This is the cost of restoring STEPS. We already gave you the cost of a COLA. And to find out what the cost of both would be, we just add the two numbers together. It'd be about one-point-nine million dollars.
Do you have any indication from the employee groups what they would prefer in terms of a COLA versus restoring STEPS? I'm sure they probably want both.
Yeah, there's different opinions because everybody gets a COLA, and not everybody gets a STEP.
Right.
But some people, who are eligible for STEPS, the STEP means more than what our COLA history has been.
And for some people...
For many people, it depends on the employee.
It does, and for some people, they would give nothing, yes, with just a STEP. Okay.
Want to summarize the memo on FY fourteen?
Yeah, I'll just kind of summarize the memo here, and, and this was just in response as a follow-up to our January twenty-ninth budget retreat. We wanted to kind of go over some options for employee wages and benefits, as well as other budget items. We're not anticipating that you'll make a decision today. We are just looking for some guidance so that we can help, not only with the collective bargaining process that's expected to begin in March, but also to assist the Finance Department in balancing the fiscal year fourteen budget that we're planning to present to you at the end of March. For background information, it was our understanding on January twenty-ninth that you were interested in doing something for employees, but you do have concerns regarding the affordability of, of doing something for those employees, as well as the possibility of a property tax rate increase that could be needed to, to fund those types of requests. Some options that we've come up with are things that we wanted to discuss with you. If you can go to the bottom of page one. Fiscal year fourteen, one of the things that we would suggest to help reduce expenditures would be to implement a mid-year COLA for employees versus a, a whole-year COLA. That would reduce the eight hundred thousand expenditure to about four hundred thousand dollars for the general fund. We would suggest that it be scheduled for January two thousand fourteen payroll. And in our opinion, a COLA would also need to be contingent upon the development of a plan to address declining revenues in the general fund, as well as possible development of new revenues for the general fund. And we'll go over some of those suggestions a little bit later. On the page two there, we did give you the estimated cost for a mid-year COLA. For two and a half percent for the general fund, it would be three hundred and thirty thousand. Three percent COLA would be about four hundred thousand, and then for the other funds, the enterprise funds, it would be about one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand for each of those amounts respectively. In fiscal year fourteen, we are expecting that our health insurance cost will increase by about twelve percent at this time, because employees have not received pay increases for the last three to four fiscal years. We are suggesting or recommending that the city should attempt to ensure that employees' portion paid for health insurance premiums remain constant. In order for the city to absorb that twelve percent cost increase in health insurance, we would need to come back to you at a later date with plan adjustments for active employees, as well as retire, retirees. Those things are also items that would be discussed during the collective bargaining process for active employees. The estimated cost increase for the twelve percent increase over fiscal year thirteen's budget in the general fund for both active and retirees is four hundred and forty thousand dollars that we are going to absorb as a result of the increase. For all funds, the total is six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Were those numbers in the January twenty-ninth estimates?
Yes, they were. They were already included in that number.
Okay.
Uh, for item number three, we do have some suggestions for general fund revenue options. As we mentioned earlier, the downturn in the economy has created some significant reductions in general fund revenues, as well as reductions in the city's tax assessable base. To compensate for those revenue losses, the city has made significant reductions in expenditures, and those expenditure reductions are currently in place at this time. We're also expecting that the upcoming December two thousand thirteen triennial reassessment will also negatively impact the city for our fiscal year fifteen budget, and we need to plan for that. In order to afford additional financial support for employees, we believe that general fund revenues must be strengthened. And to be fiscally responsible, we need to develop a plan in fiscal year, at this time, for fiscal year fourteen, as well as fifteen, to help address the upcoming revenue losses for fiscal year fifteen. We also need some guidance for balancing the fiscal year fourteen budget. Some potential new and increased revenue sources that have been identified during manager meetings. One, of course, would be the property tax rate increase, which has been mentioned before. The implementation of a red light camera program, a stormwater management fee, a separate personal property tax rate for utility and railroad businesses that was mentioned by Kristen at one of our previous meetings, a separate fire tax, uh, fire service tax, and the declaration of a water fund dividend to transfer to the general fund. Just to touch base on a couple of things that are mentioned here, Kristen did mention the separate personal property tax rate for utility and railroads staff. Scott Nyswoner and I are currently working on developing a process for that and implementing, researching it to find out what we can do to, to create a new personal property tax rate for those two different types of businesses.
Use MML, because there's other, you know...
Yes, we have. We've pulled information from MML. We've met, and we're, at this time, looking at what they have and probably touch base with the attorney next.
And just to clarify, probably not a large revenue source for us, maybe a hundred or, a hundred thousand or less?
That's what we're expecting.
But just, still worth considering, but just so you understand that it won't balance the general fund by itself.
And then the declaration of the water fund dividend, we did review the policy for our water fund dividend and met with Mike Spiker, the Director of Utilities, earlier this week. It's something that we need to review after the audit is completed in November of December, November or December next year. We need to make sure that the utility fund or that the water fund is able to pay for its debt service, and that it's affordable for the water fund. We don't want to hurt the water fund in any way. So we are going to probably include an amount for a water fund dividend, but it will be contingent upon not only water fund, the water fund's fiscal year thirteen ending position, but we, we will need to look at their five-year projection of capital project needs to make sure that they're able to afford to do what they need to do.
And what Michelle's referring to is about six years ago, we declared a dividend in the water fund. Mayor and Council approved it. They also approved a policy for declaring the dividend. So when she's talking about working off of those audit results, that's based on that policy that was approved in two thousand and seven.
So although it's a, a revenue source we can consider, it's not something that we can count on at this time. The last option that we would like to discuss regarding employee wages and benefits would be the career track program. Several years ago, when we froze STEPS and, and froze COLAs, we also froze the career track program. Staff is recommending that the career track program be reinstated for fiscal year fourteen. This will allow employees who have taken additional training and increased their skill levels to progress within their career track. Not all employees have a career track program, and it would be based on what their job description allows for. We did talk with managers to determine who in their department has progressed within their career track and could potentially benefit from reinstatement of this. We estimate the cost for the general fund would be about twenty thousand dollars. For other funds, would be an additional sixty-five thousand, for a total of eighty-five thousand. And at this time, I'd like to open up to any questions, see if you have any comments.
And once again, we're not necessarily looking for decisions on these ideas. We're, we're trying to share with you some of our thoughts as we've continued to work on the budget. Since the budget retreat, the, the thousand-dollar payment, we are offering that as a recommendation. But these are our ideas, both to give you something to thank for, in reference to the budget, as well as collective bargaining negotiations that'll start later this month.
And of course, we have to think about FY fifteen when we make these.
Very much so. I mean, we talked about that in January, but yeah, we would really suggest we think of this in terms of two years because of that December 2013 triennial.
Yeah. Going back to the previous sheet where you outlined that the fund balance, 7.8 million, about 22% of the FY12 budget, which puts you well over the 60-day period. That is the portion that you're proposing to cut down by some small amount to cover the $1,000?
Yes.
Okay. And so a couple of questions, because I know way back, it seems like now, in the early 2000, our fund balance, what was an amount, but included both cash on hand as well as some assets. Is the 7.8 million reflected here, excuse me, is that an actual fund balance of cash or is that counting assets?
It is our unreserved fund balance. It would include cash as well as assets, offset by that cash balance at the end of fiscal year 13. I don't have that information with me, but I can get it for you.
So the 7.8 million that we have in unreserved balance isn't all actual cash?
No, I know that our pooled cash assets are well over $30 million, but that's for all funds. I'm not sure what the general fund portion of that would be at this time.
Okay.
But this is the fund balance is defined by the auditors.
Yes.
Excepted by the bond raters and the auditors as standard municipal fund balance.
Right.
There's obviously a significant difference between cash on hand and accounting for an asset as cash on hand. And when I read this, I'm assuming that that cut into it, so to speak, won't take it from 23% down to 16%?
No, it'll take it down to a number around 20, 21%.
Okay, about 21%.
Right.
Okay, that's what I figured because I saw the 16. I was like, man, there's no way at that level it takes it down that far. Well, that, I think, if I had a better understanding of what that figure was, I'd have a better comfort. You know what I mean? And what level that's down to.
Better understand that 7.8.
Right. I mean, if it's a million in cash and 6.8 million in, you know, in fund balance asset, that would concern me.
I can get that information for you.
Mr. Monson, do you have a question?
No, I don't. She's done.
A couple of questions on the second sheet then, because I'm trying to marry that between sort of what we were presented at the retreat, which I have here in front of me, and what is presented now. And obviously, some of these things are easier to sort of tick off and swallow, so to speak, than others, like the career track. You know, just I read that, and it just seems to make sense to me. You know, you expand your marketability as an employable individual, you expect to be compensated for that. But one of the things that appears to be missing here, and I think it's reflective of point number one, which is this FY14 mid-year COLA, 2.5% to 3% for all full-time employees. I think as the mayor or someone else here asked, it'd be good for us to understand which has the greater opportunity for benefit, you know, to the employee base as a whole, whether it's the STEP or the COLA, you know, rather than both. But this mid-year implementation gets back to, and even in item number three, the FY14 general fund revenue opportunities for revenue enhancements, I'd still like to see the budget to be able to identify, you know, potential for expenditure, you know, additional expenditure reductions. I don't have any real issue with the items identified except for obviously the property tax rate increase. And so that's the one that I wanted to be clear on is that, you know, in order for me, that's obviously always been a last resort or mechanism of last resort. But I'd still like to, before I would ever consider that as an option, I would still like to have an opportunity for us to consider those joint, some type of joint process of review with our respective local governing entities in our ability to create efficiencies and savings, i.e. expenditure reductions, you know, as part of any package of revenue enhancement. And that's just my personal opinion on the matter. And I think there's opportunity there that we, you know, that we have not capitalized on, and I don't want to lean on the property tax as being the, you know, the easier result in there.
We can add that to the list.
Well, and we can come back to, I mean, we're going to need to wrap up the budget in the next week, and we weren't really looking for this discussion today to give us ultimate clarity on the budget. You're going to get a budget that's balanced, but it's going to require work from the mayor and council because you may not like some of the assumptions we've made, and that's fine. But we can also, Michelle, look at instead of giving a COLA for next year, the mid-year COLA, what if we gave a STEP? That's, I think, what you're asking, Councilmember Elshire. You've got the cost of restoring the forgone COLAs, I'll call it, but if we were just to start with one, I'm sorry, the forgone STEPS. But what you're asking is if we just gave one STEP increase on July 1 instead of a COLA, how does that cost compared to the mid-year COLA?
I think that cost would be around $350,000 to $400,000.
For a one STEP?
For one STEP for a whole year. And again, that doesn't impact every employee, the way that the grade scales are set up. There are certain...
Right. Like I said, I think that those are the types of details I would be interested in to better understand, you know, what the greater beneficial direction is. I've always been supportive of a water fund dividend. I think it is very clear that the city is the owner, the operator, the investor, the debt holder of our water and sewer systems. We serve more folks outside of our city who aren't responsible for that debt ultimately on that system than we serve inside of our city. And there should be some recognition of that as our citizens carry that debt load. You know, and a dividend is clearly a mechanism in which to, you know, recapture some of that lost opportunity over the 60 years that we've extended it.
And we'll be including that in the proposed budget. We've discussed that. Once again, it'll depend on the audit results.
You have a ball...
Go ahead. I just had two last points. The first is on the stormwater management fee, and I think Don asked this question before, was, actually, there's three quick points. The first is the stormwater management fee, whether or not that, what we're seeing here applies to projects or operations and people.
It applies to a combination of both. Stormwater management fees that have been implemented in other municipalities can be used to cover operations for inflow and infiltration, curb and sidewalk, as well as street sweeping, which is normally operating expenditures. And then it can be used to maintain the inflow and infiltration and curb and sidewalk on the capital side as far as replacement and upgrades and new. So it's both.
Okay. Because, I mean, I don't see, I guess I can envision it applying to operations, but you know, I'd have to see that. Then the second is you list 39 employees being, I guess, unfunded at this point, and I think Don brought up this point as well, is I'd like an understanding of what departments those employees are in and how long they've been vacant, those positions have been unfunded, in order to better understand, you know, whether they should be reinstated.
And that was the number of unfunded positions at the start of the current fiscal year. That number's changed. Am I saying that right, Michelle?
Yes.
Because that was the start, right?
That was the start of the year.
You know, as we unfroze five in police, three in fires.
I'd like to understand what that number is and how long they've been vacant in that operation.
I think your question points to, I think it was the light department that had nine.
For like eight years.
Right.
Had gone without these unfunded positions, and your question was whether or not they needed to be listed as vacant positions. Right. Because I think Mike clearly indicated that he doesn't need them.
Right.
If that is indeed the case.
And we were going to take a shot at reclassifying those with Mike.
The last point I don't think is reflected on here, and it's something that just came up today, and I'm interested to see how the county commissioners discussed it this morning. But it clearly has an impact on our budget, is their action as it relates to suspending the excise tax. Because clearly, if they suspend it, similar to what happened in other counties that have taken that route, we can't then come and implement our own, which was the whole debate we had, you know, six or seven years ago, when we all sort of sat down and agreed in good faith through some difficult negotiation that this is the formula we would move forward with. If that good faith effort now is being disrupted, then I think we need to understand what that disruption means to our budget and steps that we need to take, whether it's through getting rid of our APFO as it applies to school and revisiting the adoption of impact fees. You know, if that's the measure, then that's the measure.
And Alex did go to the commissioners' meeting this morning to hear that discussion. He's got a little summary email that I just sent out to you before the meeting. I haven't been able to read it all, but he's got a nice little synopsis, so you might keep an eye out for that email. I'm sure it'll also be in the newspaper tomorrow.
And I don't think we're the only town that fits in that boat.
I think, yeah, others are getting the 28% too.
Right.
Marty? Do we have a ballpark on how many people, what percent of the employees do get a STEP increase or the other way around, which one?
I don't know if you do, Michelle.
I don't have that information.
I think that's what we'll come back with.
Yeah, that would be...
How many employees would get a STEP increase?
I tend to think in the situations like we've been in that the COLA is fair because people have suffered across the board. There's also implications for what the next year, you know, what the next year amount is for each of these strategies too, so.
That gets to that point of looking at that long view, of seeing if there is opportunities for efficiencies of cooperative efforts among the local governing entities. And I think that that gets to the point that Lou always brought up was, you know, the dollar's so big, and if 12% is going to some certain expense as it relates to employee compensation, and you're able to take that 12% down to the 8%, it'd be real nice to have that cooperative effort with your employees and turn around and saying, you're going to get back in your pay 2% of that 4% reduction that we can achieve by greater efficiencies, you know, among the partners. I mean, you know, it's just a matter of how you split it up. So that's sort of the framework that I would like to have that discussion in.
Bruce, do you need a decision on any of these things tonight?
Well, if you are comfortable with the payment, and we'd bring it back for action, but it'd be nice to know whether you think that's acceptable. We have heard a couple of you say you were open to that. We think it's affordable. It doesn't impact in terms of carrying forward and...
I see at least three heads nodding.
Penny's nodding.
Penny's nodding?
No, Penny's thinking.
Oh, okay.
No one speaks for Penny.
Well, that's for sure.
Thank you.
And I think on the other information, what it does is just give you a sense of what we're going to be wrestling with starting in April on the budget.
It's a good thing we're passing off all the hard stuff with Sora, off to Sora, and let them handle that so we can focus on the budget.
The only thing I'd like to add is, this is just me speaking and no one else, but red light cameras, you won't get my support for that.
Yeah, and once again, those are just ideas.
I understand. I just wanted to make that clear to anybody who was listening.
But if you're okay with the payment, that's much appreciated. Like I said, it's not as much as we'd like, but it's a start, and it shows we're trying to look after our employees. And I think that was one of the mayor and council goals.
This is a good piece of work.
Well, yeah, the rationale is that we still have tough years coming up, so it's...
Right. And we can't ignore that.
Something given that we have options here that don't present a resolution yet.
Yes. But I really do appreciate all the hard work that you're doing behind the scenes on preparing this budget for us, and I know everybody on the council's anxiously awaiting the results of your hard work so we can have at it.
You're welcome.
This is a good piece of work. You put a lot of effort into that, obviously. So when you come back, you're going to refine this to make further recommendations that hopefully will fly.
Yes, hopefully.
We'll give you more information.
We'll have more information, more things to choose from.
All right. Well, look at this. We're right on time for the city administrators' comments.
I know it's been a long day, and I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and council for a good state-of-the-city presentation, want to acknowledge the mayor's efforts because he worked long and hard on the presentation. Aaron and Eric did a nice job on the video, but I think the credit really goes to the mayor and council. You're going to cover refuse, right? Yeah, and then just a heads up that it's hard to believe, looking out the window here, when we had sunlight, but they are telling us we could get 15 to 20 inches of snow. And that makes some people happy and others less happy. So just so you know, that we'll be going to 12-hour shifts in public works tomorrow, and Eric's got a nice schedule set up. We'll have employees from water, wastewater, and parks joining in with public works if we truly get that kind of snowfall because it'll take that kind of...
You wouldn't just go ahead and mention the trash?
Manpower. Well, you're a recycling guy, so...
Well, that's true. The decision was made too to not have people set out their trash tonight because it will just be buried in the snow tomorrow morning, and so everything will basically be pushed back one day. Trash recycling.
Everybody's back one day.
Everybody's back one day. And as you know, there'll be cleanup and backlogs, and we're used to dealing with that.
And I know that the city sent out a press release earlier, so hopefully people will pick up on that.
It's easier to pick up trash when it's on top of the snow than when it's underneath.
Right.
Then that's when we miss it, so.
I'm going to tell all these people.
And that's it for me.
All right. Mayor and council comments. Who would like to begin? I'll let you guys decide this tonight. Marty? Oh, Lou?
I'll go first. Go for it. Ever go first. I'll do it. Good job today, and your comments are very nice, Bruce, but I think clearly it was the mayor and staff that need to be commended. I think the council did very little other than show up and perform. And I tell you, for those of us who saw Eric's invention, it cost about $150 instead of $1,500. It's just another example of the devotion that our employees and staff have to what they do, and they're very good. And it wasn't a long day, but it was a good day. And I think for the first time that tonight, while we may have upset some people clearly, I think finally we went beyond just talking and are trying to go into the implementation phase. And by the way, the last thing I'll say, I hope nobody took it as criticism when I was talking about the thousands of hours that staff and the council spent on the stadium that didn't go through. It wasn't meant at all as criticism. It was meant as, I don't know how much more staff has in them to be able to put together that kind of effort when we had the private function. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
It's been a long meeting. A couple of subjects tonight. The proof is in the pudding. We'll see what we're just talking about, and I'll refrain from any Mr. Rogers jokes.
I told the chief, if you broke out the sweater in the video, we were both out of there, so.
We were this close to the cardigan. Cardigan was this close.
Me and the chief were this close to the door, probably.
Couldn't find the proper vintage cardigan sweater.
It was a good, it was a good video. And a couple of things. The first is a letter from a gentleman on 506 Summit who certainly enjoys the improvements on Summit but would like some assistance with the light at that location, so.
Yeah, and just so you know, I mean, we're working through the neighborhoods first group on that because they're the ones that we work with on the circle. They've worked with us on the lighting and made adjustments trying to accommodate... They've worked with us on the lighting and made adjustments, trying to accommodate him, and city or HDL has made adjustments to the light based on that.
Okay.
So, we felt we needed to go back to the Neighborhood's first group and coordinate with them and try to address those issues through them if we can.
The second comment, and, you know, I know I'm one of the liaisons to EDC, but I still haven't been able to get a concrete answer on whether this EDC strategic plan has actually been formally adopted. I think it would be beneficial to know that, because I've been waiting to make comments, and I don't know whether that period's lapsed or is still available for the public that has an interest in making comment. And in the, the next item was in relation to the highway user revenue funds. I don't know if anybody saw the information today, but, you know, obviously, the presentation by the governor and Speaker of the House and the Senate President as it relates to that, the process of increasing the transportation funding through some tax cent reduction and some tax percentage increase, and then a lion's share of that tax money going to mass transit, which then, you know, leaves the suburban and rural areas, you know, out in the process. Also believe there's some effort afoot to redirect some of the highway user money that the governor has earmarked as the grand of the 15.4 million to two of the counties that don't have municipalities, so there would be a decrease there, so it's sort of like a double hit, you know, in a single day. But I'd be interested to see what MML's position on that issue ultimately is. Also, I know that we've taken somewhat of an active role in the past, and I'd like to make sure that we continue that active role as it applies to criminal activities, you know, in the city as it relates to certain establishments. I know folks have read, you know, the article, the warrants issued for three in connection with the stabbing. As Lou points out very candidly, more times than I can count, that there was a time of day when downtown didn't look like downtown. We made a concerted effort to rid ourselves of those establishments from that point forward, whether it was the previous administration with the East End Taverns or our previous administration with the Metas and the Dukes, but we need to make sure that we support our staff in sending those clear messages to the liquor board that we don't tolerate those types of establishments in downtown and the activities that they bring, and we make sure we voice that concern candidly and clearly to, you know, to the folks that have the power to, you know, have authority over them. And then, the last item that I have, we were talking about downtown, and I sort of shared a little bit of my thought, you know, I'm certainly not out to try and reinvent the wheel. I went through about six hours' worth of stuff yesterday evening in preparation for the state of the city, which didn't really do much, because we were only asked two questions, I think. But, you know, here's a map from city staff, this public-private investment in downtown from 1990 to 2007, and it's an interesting map, because, you know, sort of unbeknownst to my own thought process and pulling it up, you know, it identifies that very area, and it identifies, you know, those strategic buildings and those same very things that we were talking about. So, you know, as Lou points out, you know, the process takes time, but, you know, there is change that occurs. And associated with that is an old plan I found of a property that was rezoned on the edge of town, out at the end of the dual highway, that was called the Hagerstown Town Center Project. And I think that that speaks volumes to our current conversation about where our expectation is for our town center, which is in downtown Hagerstown, and the efforts of folks that would subvert that location, you know, from time to time through efforts, whether it's, you know, major medical employers or educational entities, I think that we need to continue to reiterate the fight that downtown is right here in the heart of the city, so. That's my comments.
As the one person on this council who has never served on the city council before, I have to say that I am increasingly impressed daily with the dedication and hard work of our employees. It never ceases to amaze me how much effort they go to to provide good service to the citizens of Hagerstown. And I think that fits in quite clearly with the efforts that some of our employees made with regard to the mayor's speech this morning. I know there were at least a couple of our employees who worked the entire weekends to make that speech possible, and that's a great thing, and deeply appreciated.
Indeed.
Great state of the city, Mayor.
Thanks.
I will tell you over and over again, you are a great ambassador. You can pull just about anything off, you really can. But it was, it was very good.
Well, I appreciate that.
And for Friday morning, I have got to be at Leadership Washington County at 7:30 in the morning. So, now I have to see if I can go in late. Maybe I can go in, not go in at all.
You are, you will be at Leadership Washington County right here.
That's the answer. You'll be doing it.
Oh, my. But I just wanted to give you this, because this was really a positive. On Saturday, the Masonic Temple did their spaghetti feed. They did not do one last year. Unfortunately, there was a lot of spaghetti feeds that were going on that day, and our turnout was not very good. But there was a person who has a business in the downtown area, my husband and daughter had eaten downtown on Sunday, and the person said, you know, Saturday was really a great day for the downtown restaurants. And I thought that that was a very positive, especially considering the month, okay? But it was a good thing. So, I just want you to know, you know, all of those, and look, guys, I don't have a problem with a stadium, but just not downtown, but all of those who said that we need to have, and here we are now, that we would not have had anything going on. But I thought that was a great, you know, a great statement coming from one of the business owners. And also, I am pushing now spaghetti sauce. Since the Masonic Temple has over 200 quarts left, we are selling it at $5 a quart. Anybody wanting any can contact me under RE-NY on Mulberry Street, and I will see that they get it. That's it.
You mean in the phone book?
In the phone book.
Do we even still get phone books?
You know what? Good one. Not everybody has a computer either.
I'm just teasing you, Penny.
I know you are. They know what to do, those who have computers, otherwise they get confused with my daughter's phone. Anyway, if they want it, they'll reach me. I just don't want to put an impact on City Hall, okay?
Well, I appreciate everybody's kind words. It certainly has been a long day, and I know for sure that there are at least two staff people who stayed up past midnight last night, putting the final touches on those great videos that were just really fun to put together, and it's been a pleasure. I say it all the time, it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the mayor of this great city and to work with all five of you. And I do want to say that the state of the city will be linked on the city's website. You can go to www.hagerstownmd.org/soTC, and you will find it there. It'll also be re-airing on Channel 25 later in the week, or you can go to the city's YouTube page, and it will be also up there. I went to, soon, I think they're working on that. I have, in the past week, been to two grand openings, one on last Saturday at Beatitudes Beauty Supply Store, which is on West Washington Street at the old Carroll &amp; Company. Wonderful crowd on a cold Saturday morning, and it was just great to see that business kick off, and they would not make one sale until we cut that ribbon, which I thought was great. And also today, I had the pleasure of tapping a Ferkin keg, and it was, I was told I hit it right on the money, and there wasn't a whole lot of beer being splashed around, so apparently I've got a future in tapping kegs. But it's great to see, out of Benny's Pub, the Antietam Brewery take off Hagerstown's first microbrewery. And my last comment would just be to please stay off the roads as much as possible and let the public works department do their thing and keep the roads clear for emergency vehicles, and look out for your neighbors, don't do any heavy lifting, just take care of yourselves and one another. That'll be it, we are adjourned.